We can wait till it comes up. It's up to you.
Lisa, is there another page? Lisa, is there another page?
That is your thing, the Commissioners' annual dues, county dues. Just below that was Extension Office.
That's not the one I'm talking about. This is, this is not us. I'm saying this when we're saying District One. What is that?
That is the Commissioners as a whole, county dues. Not excluding, excluding any.
Not the Commissioners to the county.
Well, to the counties as a whole, we'd be like, we'd see 2,000.
Right, but this is part of it.
Yeah.
If not, I'll, I'll wait, and then I'll let.
Okay, thank you. You can just ask that we amend the agenda before we accept the agenda. Do you want to remove it? Do you want to remove all of it or just? So the ones that I didn't have an issue with were around this side. Where's HR? You're on here somewhere. Right here. This one, I'm, one that I would remove. And then you have job description somewhere, I thought. Okay, no, so it's just that one then? So I can just amend it to remove it? Alisa, no second page? He's not on there? It is nine o'clock and we are here for our regular business meeting. Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Corn are present. At this time, we will stand for our invocation. Here's our little prayer roll here. Anybody want to pray? There you go, Jeff. John, sorry.
Father God, we thank you for creation. Thank you for Bonner County. Thank you for making us unique and different as you have. Lord God, we're about to look at the business of the county. Lord, give wisdom to the Commissioners and speak through the people so that this government represents the people who live here. Lord, guide us in all things. And Lord, we do pray for peace and level heads and all this rocket stuff going on. Lord God, these are trying times, but you are sovereign, you are Lord, and we just appreciate you and love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, please follow the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bonner County still has some rules out there. So we're gonna amend the agenda that we have here. So the first of, the First Amendment is to remove HR Item Number One, Action Discussion Decision Regarding Policy Number 600 Compensation. That requires some further review by the Board. We will put that back on the agenda for next meeting. And the Second Amendment is to pull solid waste action items. We'll do one and two, that way you can get out of here faster. Two, after the consent agenda, we need to keep the, to make sure we do the resolutions because we have a resolution that we must make sure we follow some guidelines for. So with.
Which one are we deleting on human resources?
Human Resources only has this one up here. They've got the 600. We did a workshop on it, but we had to review all of the rest of it, too. And then on the solid waste, we need to make sure that this is specific to needing 88 because we're all done with the documents. So I will step down from the chair and move that we approve the amended order of the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion from the Board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
All right, so we will go on to consent agenda. So we've got some big-ticket items on the consent agenda. Technology has a $130,956. It's for an additional leads online contract for new investigative service for year one, two, and three totaling $6702, $6903, and then $7,110. Sheriff's Office has dog kennel materials and labor for $8,590. Item Number Six, we've got the need for some bullets for the sheriff jail marine totaling $16,985. Solid Waste has a big-ticket item. That's a salt dog spreader for sanding at collection sites for $6,744. Facilities has a maintenance quarterly cost at $1,150 for a total of $4,600. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to accept the, or consent agenda.
I do have a couple of questions.
So can we do the motion and then deliberation?
Okay. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll go into deliberation with the Board.
Sheriff, I had a question on a couple of your items on here. So the contract that you have for your services for, it looks like, I'm not quite sure what it is, your leads online services, is that a new contract or a renewal? It's a new contract? Okay. So what does that contract do? What does it provide?
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Darryl Wheeler, for the record. Attached in the, in that packet, there's a description of what the contract covers. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it.
I did, and there was kind of a lot to it. It looks like background checks, possibly.
Background checks, pawn checks, which it puts us into a network of pawn checks instead of having to go and check all the surrounding states for stolen property. It's a, now it gives us the opportunity to run those pawns and automatically, and because of this program, be able to, to access those pawns and recover stolen property. There's a whole list of, of services that this provides that. Not sure what other questions you have.
That, I thought, and I could be wrong, but I thought that when there were new contracts that had to be on the regular agenda and not on the consent agenda. Is that, is that not true?
He can put it in, into there.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I got one other question on your next one, the dog kennels.
Yes.
Is that for public dogs or is that for your canine dogs?
No, it's for public dogs.
It's for public dogs?
Yes, we're, we're putting it outside just for when we have, when we have an incident or make an arrest and we have a canine that we cannot find a home for, we have to have a facility to house it until someone gets out of jail or we find a home for it, or some other, other circumstances. So we're having inside kennel and outside kennel. And this provides us with the necessary tools to meet our, our liability and our responsibility, statutory responsibility because we're no, no longer have a contract with Better Together.
So you were using them before to do what you're gonna do now?
Yeah, this is a lot cheaper than $167,000.
I would hope so.
Yes.
And this is, looks like it's just for a concrete pad. You still have kennels to build after.
We have the kennels to put on.
You just need the pad for it.
Yes.
And risk wasn't, didn't need to sign off on that? It's not a risk to the county having other people's animals being cared for by the Sheriff's Office?
It hasn't been a, yeah, hasn't been a, that has never been brought up, no? Because we, we did have kennels when I first started, when I first came in the office in 2008. And once we, we had the contract with Better Together, we disbanded those kennels and turned those kennels into storage. So.
I think a little bit, because this has come up before. One of the things that the Sheriff's Office looked at was what was their statutory obligation since we don't have to register vehicles in Bonner, or vehicles, dogs in Bonner County? And so there was no obligation. And so one of the things that was driving the cost up was vet care for animals that we weren't obligated, but we were distributing that cost through the county. So that was in, part of that discussion of how that came to be. And if that adds more information to why the Sheriff's Office made that decision, it was a review of statute of what they were obligated to do based on the statutes.
So if a dog comes into your care and it needs vet care, then it comes out of your budget?
Sure it does.
But it's still gonna be cheaper, I'm sure, than the previous contract?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
So I can't see if there's an extra seat anywhere, but it doesn't look like it. Maybe not, sorry. Should've gone downstairs for today. Any further questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Corn?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, with that, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. So we will move to Mr. Howard. Commissioner Corn, or Commissioner Bradshaw is online, so let's add Commissioner Bradshaw to that vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Howard, Director of Solid Waste, for the record. Solid Waste received a bid from Cannon Hill Industries for wood grinding, transportation, and disposal of wood waste from Coburn, Idaho Hill, and Dickinson Sheet collection sites. The price is $60 per ton, which is $5 a ton more than last year. And this has been approved by legal, auditing, and risk.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the public on that item? Go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Hey, Bowman, Bonner County. So I think this is tied to that, and if it's not, you can cut me off. I was told by someone yesterday that, that, by someone who was asked by Roden Bridge if they could take wood debris that they cleared for road paving on their properties because if they take it to the county dump at Coburn, that the county will be charged by the solid waste facility to take care of that because it's a waste management, because they run, even though the county owns it, Waste Management runs it. And I'm guessing that might be tied into this.
Waste Management does not run the wood grinding.
Or some corporation possibly that does will charge the county for that wood chipping. And so it was either that or they take it up to the Grouse Creek pit and burn it. But they would prefer, if a landowner could take it and use it and burn it for their own purposes because the county's being charged to use its own facility. Could you speak to that?
So we're not being charged to use our facility. We're being charged by Cannon Hill to grind the wood waste and transport it and dispose of it. So Cannon Hill has a contract with Solid Waste. Waste Management has nothing to do with the wood waste products.
Well, okay, I got the wrong company name, but that's how it's given to me. But the process remains, yes?
Yes.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for grinding, transportation, and disposal of wood piles at the Dickinson Sheet, Idaho Hill, and Coburn sites and the amount of $60 per ton for this current fiscal year.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second discussion by the Board.
None.
Is there, do we do this, or maybe it's, which, is there a southwest Bonner County location where this occurs? It sounds like it's mostly up here.
The wood grinding occurs at Coburn, Dickinson Sheet, Upper Priest Lake, and Idaho Hill.
But not at the south, southern ones? Okay, all right. Any further deliberation?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, the next item is attached as a resolution to carry over solid waste funds. Solid Waste requests to carry over the unspent funds from the Coburn Transfer Station construction project from FY 2024 to FY 2025 for the Coburn Transfer, Transfer Station Construction Project, which is still ongoing. Solid Waste is requesting to move the remaining $1,966,782.52 from 0239480 FY 2024 to 239480 FY 2025 for ongoing projects. This has been approved by auditing and risk and legal.
I have some questions on this Coburn project transfer. What, what is the ongoing construction that's needed? Because when I read the way this was written, it first says ongoing at Coburn, but then ongoing project. So what specifically still needs to be done at this? Because we've had quite a bit of some change orders on this project.
So most of this is just retainage, and we have some invoices that are not in yet from Great West Engineering.
So it's payment for services already rendered, but not a project that, like a project that's ending completion?
Correct. And the remainder of that amount will go toward the first loan payment in April.
Okay. Do you have any questions for him before we call for public comment?
Nope.
All right. Any comment from the public on this one? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 24-87, authorizing the clerk to open the solid waste FY 2025 budget and carry forward fiscal 2024 funds totaling $1,966,782.52 to Bonner County Solid Waste Capital Construction Fund, 023-9480.
Seconded.
All right, motion is seconded. Is there any deliberation by the Board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk Rosedale.
Good morning, everybody. Commissioners, before you, I have Claims Batch 25, I'm sorry, Fiscally 25, Claims Batch Number Seven totaling $1,155,012.96 for your approval. And before you get into that, there's a couple of big-ticket items I want to read for some people. We have $130,000 for our Tyler software renewal. We have $13,000 that goes to elections because of the election we just had, and most of that's ballot printing. We have $715,000 going to solid waste operations, disposal of waste, rural collection, and contracted labor. And then we have fuel for the sheriff, $15,000. And then road, grant funds, we have $85,000 for Roden Bridge and $22,000 for emergency management.
So on page 27, 5930 has a payment to Commissioner Williams for $154. Can we pull that off? I did not attend that conference, and so reimbursement for that wouldn't be necessary.
We can pull it off.
And then on page 44, we have Idaho Association of Counties payment for a midwinter conference for, what is, is that? Because there's two different ones. And so I would like you to confirm. I know that Commissioner-elect Domke attended. That needs to be requested as a reimbursement to the Board. I'm not sure what that one was.
So the, the midwinter conference, I know that my comptroller and I are both going to the midwinter conference in late January.
And I know we're all putting that in there, but on some of them, it says District One. I just want to make sure we're doing it, having the correct reporting. And so if we pull that one off and just confirm before we move forward.
And which one is that, the 330 or, no?
Yeah, it's on the, your last page.
Are you on like 50?
Got a couple of it. It comes up a couple of times, page 44. And then.
Okay, page 24, and that's 300.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that they're labeled correctly.
I see a 530.
And I think, wait, you told me one of your District One was the overall payment for.
That's what our comptroller said.
It says District One, which we are, the whole organization pays.
And I don't know if that is for our participation down in Courtillane when we have those meetings.
Mm-mm, that's not what that is. We don't charge, IAC doesn't charge for that District One meeting. That's, that's our district meeting. So if we can just confirm those two things and then pull that, that check from being issued to me.
Okay.
So I would step down from the chair and modify the motion to say, based on the information before us, I move to approve the FY 25 Claims in Batch Number Seven, removing the item identified and confirming the IAC District One payment.
I'll second that.
All right, and since I, I said it to make sure we got it right, I'm gonna say, any questions from the public? Seeing none, any discussion from the Board?
So the 530 is for Mike and I to go to the midwinter conference?
Yes, that's what he's.
I'll be reporting for it.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next, before you, I have a renewal of our copier lease for elections. It's with Cannon again. We, it's run by legal, and they signed that, the agreement corporate-wide for all of Bonner County dealings with, with Cannon, with those three conditions that the government, our state government set, the boycotting Israel, the government of China, and contract with abortion providers. So that's all set. The terms are roughly similar to the last one. It's, it is the monthly lease of $164. Per charge for black and white is .69 cents, a seventh of a penny, and four cents for a color copy.
I have a question on this one, only because I thought when we took out defense attorney that we had copiers that had leases. Does anybody know? And that's a technology one. It's Director Storm is back there. Did we get stuck with that lease and there's one that we have a lease on? Do you remember?
I think the public defenders are still using their copiers.
No, this is a left behind at the public defenders, and we were told to recapture it as the county.
I don't know what they've left behind.
Okay. Technology, are you there? My last conversation is they were going to try to get out of the lease on that copier, so.
I just got an email that I haven't been able to read the research on that.
Is it possible that we could use that versus renewing a lease since we still have, we've already paid for it as the county? Can you hold this or do you need to?
Do you want to approve it pending whatever results you do?
That's fine, I can do that.
Sure.
I'd rather use what we already paid for if that's an option, okay?
Okay.
All right, any questions from the public?
Aha.
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County. Just a question, it's, it's labeled election copier. Is it a copier we only use for elections?
99%. So it lives in the elections office for all the election stuff we do. The way our copiers are set up, they're networked. So if there's an emergency, somebody in recording could print a document there, but that doesn't happen. What more frequently happens is election uses auditing's printer in an emergency when we're getting ready for election, the Friday before election. That would be the only time across printers. But only election really uses the elections printer.
So does it sit idle the majority of the time?
My election manager can.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, all right, we'll entertain a, any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the lease of the Cannon copier for elections, pending the results from the public defender's office.
Seconded.
Can I clean it?
You want to amend that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so that, because it, so there's a first and a second. Let me call for roll call vote, and then if we knock it down, then I can clean it up. The roll call vote? No?
No.
Yes.
I'm gonna step down from the chair and say, based on the information before us, I move that we approve the lease of the Cannon copier for elections as set forth above. If the Cannon copier that we already have a lease for that resides at the public defender's office is no longer available to the county under the current lease. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion from the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
No.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Jake? Oh, I've looked dead at you a couple of times, but I lost you in the crowd.
Morning, Board members of the public. Jake Gabel, Planning Director. So what you have before you is a time extension request for a planned unit development that was proved back in 2021. So the applicants are requesting a four-year time extension to January 15th, 2029. Additional time is needed to complete the project. The time extension request for PUD applications are provided under VCRC 12-258D. And in this case, there's a condition of approval A4 in the, in the decision letter. I'll go over that shortly. So this is a large-scale mixed-use planned unit development project that was approved by the Board on January 15th of '21. Attached in your packet is that BSCC decision letter. The file was reviewed in conjunction with a preliminary plat, and that file number is SS 6-20. The project contains single-family dwellings, boat storage and services, community dock, marina, and some upland accommodations, which are all permitted within the recreation district. The residential lots range in size from 13,788 square feet to 18,195, with a 2.12-acre utility lot and an open space of 2.89 acres, along with a submerged lot of just over 15 acres. There's a condition of approval A4 in that decision letter, which doesn't align with 12-258D, which only allows for a two-year time extension to be granted by the Board. That being said, in the decision letter and in the motion from the Board, they did amend that condition and allowed for the applicant to request a four-year time extension, which is what they've done in this case. The applicants applied, so additionally, the applicants applied for a modification to this, and that's File MOD 3-24. They're seeking to modify several aspects of the approval. That, that file, the modification 3-24, is not in front of the Board at this time. It may come before the Board in the future, you know, in the future for consideration. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that they're, they've been seeking several different approvals, and now they're looking to modify that here in the near future. And the project rep is, rep is here as well to answer any questions.
I don't have questions for the project rep. I only actually have some questions for the planning department.
Okay.
So with respect to a conditional use permit and kind of, we're changing a lot of rules, changing a lot of things on this particular one. Is it reasonable that this get put forward at a meeting where we're addressing the other issues? Because if we're just changing a little bit as we go, I would prefer to look at the complete project versus stair stepping it. And then why, what's the, are we required to give them the extension is a different question? And are we required to give them four years? That's a significant jump. And when does it actually expire?
So it expires January 15th of next year. So they, they do have.
So they've got one more year on the current one?
No, they have two months.
Oh, January?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's next.
Yeah, so that, that's why they're here now. Like I said, they're seeking that modification. The reason I brought this before the Board sooner than later is because they're gonna want to modify that modification or maybe not go forward with it if the Board's not willing to extend this permit. So this planned unit development, if you go to, and in your packet, there's a copy of the code section that's relevant. So this planned unit development, if you go to, and in your packet, there's a copy of the code section that's relevant here, which is 12-258D. To answer one of your questions, it's, it's permissive in the code. It says an extension for time, time requests should not exceed two years and may be granted by the board of county commissioners. There's, there's no criteria in which to evaluate time extensions. And there's no hearing requirements. It's typically, we bring this forth before the decision body, whether that be the zoning commission or the board, to grant or not grant a time extension, so.
And so for me, when I, when I read through this, one of the things that when we're asking for an extension of the time, at the time that it was put forward, that's the time allotted to complete the project. But a lot has changed in the community in terms of what you would consider if we're looking at such an adjustment. Is it reasonable that we extend the time without, with an automatic extension versus reviewing in totality what that impact is on the surrounding area? And what's the board required to do if they were awarded the amount of time? Are they not expecting to, if we don't, if we don't move forward with this, their project still has the time allotted in the decision for the next two months, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you tell us why they've had this for four years and they're needing an extension?
I think his, his request outlined a lot of that, and I'm sure Mr. Grimm could probably give you more details than I could. But I believe they've been in under several different litigations that have postponed the construction and commencement of their project. Without going into all the details that I don't have.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
No.
Hearing none, we will move to.
No, that, it's not an unusual thing to, to request a time extension on projects that size, especially when it involves being on the water. And though this is not an uncommon thing, and I would say go forward, but that's me.
Okay. So we'll open it up for a public comment. Any comments from the public? I see Ms. Martin's hand is up. I see a whole bunch of hands. We should do paddles next time. Got you. We're going to go Martin first, and then I'll start calling on people in the room. Ms. Martin.
So Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County resident. Did I understand that the planning department people recommended the extension, Jake? Or Commissioners, I guess, as I could send it to you and then.
The planning department is just putting forth the request and reading it. There's no recommendation on this. They're just commenting that there was legal review by Bill Wilson regarding the document.
All right. And then are there any, has it been put out to the different agencies? And particularly the schools as, as I heard homes being mentioned, which means kids and the impact of those kids onto the school district. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, what you have right here is that the board is being asked for the extension. You're not hearing a hearing on this. You're hearing that there's a request to extend it for four more years.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
All right, to the room. Sir. And please state your name and whether you're Bonner County resident when you go to the microphone there.
I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello, I'm Don Holland, a 50-year residence in Bonner County. Why is this process, this planning process by Idaho Club being capped at a two-year extension limit? I believe it's at a two-year cap so that any renewal or extension can be analyzed for the current up-to-date conditions involving the parcel of land in question. That seems like a fair and workable strategy so that we as a community don't have to make commitments to the future that can't be reasonably anticipated. The Idaho Club Trestle Creek Project continues to put migrating fish, especially endangered bull trout, bull trout, in an ever-increasing vulnerable position. You ask how so? In 1983, our State Fish and Game Department began a study of Trestle Creek and the number of bull trout migrating up this waterway. It's called, and this is a long title, it's called Pondure Basin Bull Trout Red Monitoring Annual Project Survey. This survey reports every year on this migration. What stands out is that in the last eight of nine years, the migrating bull trout have not reached their 10-year migrating average. Repeat that again. In the last eight of nine years, the migrating bull trout have not reached their 10-year migrating average. This is a huge red flag showing that the bull trout are struggling. This year, we have comments from Fish and Game. They quote, they, I quote, this is the Department of Fish and Game. Idaho Department of Fish and Game has concerns with the location of this project and possible negative effects to fish and wildlife, end of quote. In other words, they are concerned of the risk in this location to an already vulnerable bull trout species migrating now below their 10-year average almost 90% of the time. This development marine plans continue to be ill-suited for this particular location because they create a much greater risk than is warranted. We need to reduce the risk factors for the bull trout, not increase them. Quick bit of history. This property was purchased by Idaho Club owner Dick Valelli in the early 2000s. His vision was to develop it to make a return on the money for his investment group, VP Incorporated. I believe it's time to move on from this failed, unacceptable vision. Of all places to put a development with luxury houses, a large marine, and storage facilities, this absolutely continues to be the worst place on Lake Pondure. I certainly hope that you keep Idaho Club. Two years is long enough for an extension, if they get an extension. Four years, we can't see the future. You've already got a risk population right now with bull trout that isn't, doesn't look good. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Jennifer here.
Thank you very much. My name is Jennifer Extrem. I'm speaking on behalf of the Idaho Conservation League, located here in Sandpoint. I appreciate the questions, Commissioner Williams, that you brought up at the onset of this topic. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm here to ask you to deny the extension request for conditional use permit 006-20. That planned unit development has changed significantly since the original cup was approved. And Bonner County is obligated to know the details of what you are approving. Those details are not apparent in the current proposal before you. One, just one of many examples was highlighted during the staff report that he mentioned that it's a community dock, it's no longer a community dock, it's a commercial dock. There's many, many, many other changes to the proposal since it was approved originally. And the developer has mentioned in, in the application that third parties have caused the delay. What wasn't mentioned was that the reason why third parties have been so successful in causing that delay is because the proposal has been out of accord with both state and federal law. And so again, it's incumbent upon Bonner County to ensure that this proposal is adhering to Bonner County codes. For example, the shoreline setbacks, the wetline, wetland setbacks, the impervious surfaces codes, all of those needs to be taken a very hard look at, based on the history of this proposal and the presentations by developers. I'd also like to note that the four-year extension request seems out of accord with Bonner County Code 12-258 for large-scale planned unit developments. Extensions are limited to two years. And I heard that some previous commission or planning commission may have, may have done something to undermine that portion of the code, but that may be inappropriate. Last, I just want to emphasize that another thing that we've seen over the last several years with this proposal is that our community is resoundingly opposed to this development happening. It's not very easy to activate great segments of our community to come to meetings and to write letters and speak up. But on the last two iterations of this proposal, more than 2,000 comments have been submitted to the state government, to the governor's office, and to the Army Corps of Engineers, expressing opposition. I believe that there, the last hearing that Idaho Department of Lands held, there was one person that was a proponent, and everyone else, hundreds and hundreds of people were against this happening. So again, thank you for your thoughtful deliberations and consideration. And I ask that you deny the four-year extension request. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman.
Hey, Bowman, Bonner County. I would like to thank Ms. Extrem for bringing forth all that. There's a lot of time and effort gone into the research of bringing forth these facts. I'd like to echo your questions and comments. And Mr. Holland as well. I'm not deeply informed on this subject, but I would like to also respond to Commissioner Bradshaw, who said, well, this thing is, is whatever he said, it's typical, it's normal, it's quite common. The reason for that is because the past boards and the past planning departments, all the way up through, have basically treated pretty much any request that comes by a developer to run it through like you-know-what through a goose. And it's time that that stopped, and this should be reviewed thoroughly, and I'm going to ask it to deny this.
Thank you. Mr. Grimm, do you have someone giving you an extra three minutes? Because I think you might have more than three minutes to say. Or you think you got it?
I would be open to anyone who wanted to volunteer that, but I think I can.
You need volunteers.
Get across what I need to say in three minutes.
Okay.
Are we ready? Timer started?
Timer's starting, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate you considering this. Jeremy Grimm from the Record Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting, representing Valiant Idaho. On this issue, this, this project is complex. We're not building a house. It's on a sensitive, adjacent to a sensitive tributary. So it is a complex project that requires a lot of thinking and process. There is a web of outside agencies involved, including the Army Corps of Engineer, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Idaho Water Resources, Idaho Department of Lands, Idaho Fish and Game, ITD, Pandemic Health. So we have been going through this process, and currently this final project is set to expire in January. I am working with staff, have been for months, to get that finalized. But some of these decisions are based on other outside agencies that I have no control over their timing. I'm pleased to report just last night that the Idaho Department of Lands issued an approval for the commercial marina. This is one of the things we've been waiting for. Despite all the accusations and misfounded facts that have been presented, Idaho Department of Lands, I encourage you to read the decision, found that, in fact, Idaho Fish and Wildlife does not recommend denial of this project. So the law works, the process works, and we're working through it. My challenge right now to get this finalized, as you know, you've had some turnover in your planning department. These things don't happen quickly. And based on our response from IDL just yesterday afternoon to approve the dock, we need a little more time to get this through the wringer. I will say that through this public process, there's been a lot of great feedback. Some of the things that have come out is a reduction in the overall scale of the marina. Donation of six acres of land, a transfer to the, the tribe, the actual mouth of Trestle Creek, preserved in perpetuity has come out of this. And most importantly, the islands that many of the public members were very concerned about are not going to be removed. So we will have another modification ideally coming to you that will show you this refined plan. It is a lower intensity plan, and we're just seeking a little more time because this is a really complex process. So four years, if that's too long, if you're more comfortable with two, certainly agreeable to that. We just need some more time to work through sort of the kinks of a big project like this. So thank you so much for consideration and look forward to working on this project in the future and getting it through.
All right. Anybody else in the room with a public comment?
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident. From what I've heard, if, if two years is the, what's allowed by law, then I would not go over two years. But it would make sense to me to present the modifications, kind of Asia what you're asking for, that let's see the big picture. Present the modifications and then ask for an extension. Because if you grant an extension now, it's based on the current plan, and there's no, there's no guarantees that any scaled-down plan is, is going to occur. So I would ask, one, that you stay within the law. And two, I echo the things that Jennifer said and this gentleman, and just be cautious. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? All right, Ms. Heiser.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that, Mr. Grimm, you should recuse yourself. I think it's ludicrous that you're continuing to represent this organization now that you are mayor. And I'm sure you're quite aware that most of the traffic coming off of 200 rolls right on through Sandpoint. So in my opinion, I think it's inappropriate for you to continue to represent this. This project, and I wholeheartedly stand behind Idaho Conservation League in their presentation this morning, and I am recommending denial of an extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other online comments? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a time extension of the Idaho Club North Lake PUD file CUP 0006-20, extending the approval of January 15th, 2029.
There's a motion.
I second it.
Second? All right, deliberation by the board. Commissioner Corn.
So I, I think that under the circumstances that they should be approved, the extension, but I do think that we need to follow the rules here and allow a two-year extension instead of a four.
I think you motioned for four?
That would be an amended motion.
Okay, so we would.
We're deliberating.
Yeah, but you mo, you made the motion, but your motion said four and not two.
Commissioner Williams, I, I think that he just said he moved to grant the extension, but he didn't say how long in the motion.
He gave a date, which is the four years.
Okay.
It is four years.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry. The devil's in the details. So we'll amend your motion to see a two-year extension is what you mean. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So do you want to second that motion, Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're now deliberating on a two-year extension. And your argument is it's within statute.
Correct.
So I do want to clarify one thing for the planning view of it. There, because of the way this was written, you, it would be considered within the parameters to do four years. So I want that part to be clear. Was that you, Bill? Okay. We're good. Commissioner Bradshaw, any comment on this?
None. I'm good with it.
I have concerns on moving a conditional use permit and having so many moving parts. And actually, when you hear, and I'm only going to comment on Mr. Grimm's comment. If this is a complex project that has so many moving parts, that has a new report that's been given to the project yesterday that I, as a commissioner, have not seen, how can I really evaluate a two-year if we're really just moving it around a little bit? There's nothing that prevents this project from saying, now that we have received additional information, we're going to fully come back to the board with a new request for a conditional use permit with the parameters so that we can reevaluate the moving parts of this particular project. I don't have access to even what he reported, and so for me, I believe that it is likely that the conditional use permit that was actually voted on and approved back then is no longer actually what this project is. We're changing the project as we go with new amendments. And so it seems reasonable and appropriate to say that this project should come back before the board with an updated renewed request with the data that they're actually continuing to collect because arguably, the fact that we are receiving information yesterday for a project that is happening means maybe we prematurely authorized a conditional use permit. So for me, I would vote no on any extension and ask that the project come back. And I think that would actually make a cleaner presentation to the board, to the community, and to planning as to the direction of the project. And actually would remove a lot of these modifications post an extension. Because what do you do if additional information comes forward and then we're not able to meet the next deadline? It's because we didn't know what the actual project was before we approved the conditional use permit. So I have a dissenting opinion on the extension, and my preference would be no extension, but have the project take a look at what its actual project is and represent a request for a conditional use permit, which would benefit a lot of things for the project engineers. And in using Mr. Grimm's response, it is a complex project with a lot of thinking that's required. And that means that I am responsible to do my part as a commissioner, to do that complex thinking before I extend something that I clearly don't have the information to know how to extend it because I don't even have the letter that he is in receipt of. So I have a dissenting opinion on the, the motion to extend for two years. Any other deliberation from the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is.
Next is Sheriff Wheeler.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Excuse me. Sheriff Wheeler, for the record. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office would like approval to enter an agreement with the Lippert Excavation and Pipeline Incorporated for snow removal for the Bonner County Sheriff's Office complex. There will be a rate of $130 an hour for pickup with a plow and $160 for greater per hour. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office has, and this is different from your memorandum, has inadequate funds in the 0345-7405 Sheriff's Repair Building Maintenance Budget Account to pay for the services. And a caveat to that is that we were budgeted for $50,000 and then an extra $12,500, but once the budget was finalized, those funds were not moved. So my conversation with the comptroller, the current comptroller, is that we're going to wait till the middle of the year to find out if we have to move funds, but most likely, we're going to be using A budget leftover to move over to the B budget to pay for this. So overall, my budget can sustain this cost, but we're going to have to move funds around later on in the year to pay for it. But this is a necessary contract that needs to be approved.
Did you change your write-up so that the one that gets signed would include the language?
I didn't. I just noticed that this morning when I came.
Because the other thing I noticed on this one is, I thought that Lippert gives a minimum number of hours for when they need to use one of these. Do you remember, Teddy?
They give a minimum depth of where they're going to be. It doesn't say the minimum hours of what they're going to use. They just remove it. The best way they can get it done is to move it.
Madam Chair, the notes is in the contract, "Snow in the Sandpoint ponder area will be cleared when the depth of three to four inches has accumulated," or otherwise directed by the property manager.
No, I know that part. I thought that one of their options of removal had a minimum per hour charge. That should be in the motion. That's what I'm referencing. To make sure we clear that.
Well, the contract says, say, quarter hour minimum is in the contract.
So in the motion, we didn't say that. Because I think when you wrote yours, it said the minimum amount to make sure that we're approving that there's a quarter hour minimum in. Okay. Do you mind if I motion it so I make sure that gets read? So I'll step down for the chair and say, "Based on the information before us, I move to approve the winter maintenance proposal from Lippert Excavation and Pipeline, Inc. for the Bonner County Sheriff's Complex Lot, and allow the chair to sign administratively based on the attached rate sheet with a notation that as we continue into this fiscal year, the sheriff's office may need to have the transfer of funds that was approved for the budget but not moved." Is there a second to that?
A second, yeah.
All right. So I did it out of order to make sure I addressed it. So we'll go public comment. Seeing none, any deliberation by the board to the motion and the second?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And then that addressed your concern on the money.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, next up, Parks and Waterways.
You have a human resources there.
At the beginning of the meeting, Commissioner Bradshaw, we amended and removed that item.
Okey-dokey.
Good morning, Matt Zoller, Parks and Waterways Director. Issue regarding, or not really an issue, navigation light maintenance secretary of the Army is seeking to sign a license for continued operation and maintenance of six navigation lights to Bonner County around the waterways of Albany Falls Dam Project area. The renewal will be a five-year term, beginning January 15, 2025, and ending January 15, 2030.
Any questions for Matt?
No.
Any public comment on his item?
It is just a renewal.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Well, based on the information before us, I move to approve signing a license for continued operation and maintenance of six navigation lights to Bonner County for a five-year term from January 15, 2025, through January 15, 2030.
Did auditing actually review, because I don't have a check mark?
It was just for legal.
I know, but did you send it there?
To auditing, no.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next items are under Commissioner Williams, but budget internal controls. So one of the, this is pertaining to reviewing some of EMS stuff. And so one of the things that, in review, we don't have all the answers, but everybody's diligently working, but we have some identified things that we can improve upon. So in speaking with our treasurer and clerk's office, the recommended available balance for the ambulance district is a minimum of $2 million to cover a minimum of six months' worth of services. A lot of this is salaries from EMS. So every month, the treasurer sends a report to the clerk's office regarding the available cash balances for county accounts that she has visibility of. Internal controls, the purpose of internal controls is to have a safety mechanism for accounting and financial information aimed at improving process, preventing fraud, and ensuring compliance. As we continue to review Bonner County EMS district, the following internal controls are recommended. And this is going to be a lot for Clerk Rosedale to say whether he agrees or not, because he is the clerk of the county, but this is kind of where I am right now. So, one, when county treasurer sends out the monthly account report to the clerk's office, the treasurer will include a copy to the Board of County Commissioners and the chief of the ambulance district. Two, prior to issuance of checks from the EMS budget, available cash must be reviewed to ensure that the checks will clear. The purpose of this is to increase the amount that they're looking at, the cash line of the EMS budget. Three, now, there's a caveat on this one, so let me explain before people shoot their hands up. So there's recognition that they don't have a $2 million cash reserve at this time. But one of the internal controls is that if the budget comes within 50% of the six-month minimum cash balance, EMS chief will create a plan of action correction with the clerk's office to address the available cash balance potential shortfalls. Some considerations from a risk internal control, things to consider. Revisit current contract terms and payments. Complete a full spend analysis. Address uncontrolled spending with a vision toward automation. Review procurement planning to reduce emergency procurement. Review transactional costs. Streamline process and procedure. Review cost structure. Identify cost drivers. Review benchmarking and best practice for the industry. Review the opportunities of outsourcing if appropriate. Review human capital management process and ensure compliance with industry standards while managing the aspect of the budget. The personnel accounts for the majority of the EMS budget. And so this is intended to give some increased transparency and communication on the budget as we move forward. There'll be additional things that are identified, but my motion is that, based on the information before us at this time, my motion is that we implement the above-stated internal controls as they relate to the Bonner County ambulance district at this time. That doesn't mean it's all-inclusive. It means it's a starting point as we move forward with addressing this. So with that, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, we're going to go to public comment. Sir?
Hey Bowman, Bonner County. I was going to bring this up at the end of public comment, but since it's up here now, I would like some answers because I did, I was completely unaware of the state statutes on EMS, but I did some great reading over the weekend. And it really should be run kind of like the fire districts are. So you have a, this board is the board that runs the ambulance district, and the EMS chief answers to this board. And when our treasurer put the warning out a year ago, almost a year ago, two of the members of the current board were on that board. Our clerk was in office. We have a new comptroller, but they'll, everything that you're suggesting is awesome. Why was that not, why was it not already in place? And why is no one putting their hand up and saying, "You know what? I blew it. I was part of this operation a year ago. I was, the warning bells were sounded by the treasurer, and I'm sorry to the taxpayers, but I did nothing, and now we have this fiasco on our hands."
So I'll address EMS issues on the EMS line. This one is just to do the internal controls, but there is a section on EMS. So I'll make sure that we answer that. Any questions from the public on the internal controls recommended? Only on the internal controls recommended. And then for you, I want you to state whether you're, is it capacity of your position, or just as a taxpayer?
Both, I guess. Dmitry Borasov, resident of Bonner County, and the chief of Clotrick Valley Ambulance. When you talk about the contracts, does that include contracts with the outline agencies? Because we provide service, you know, regardless if EMS has money or not.
That's a recommendation that you review all contracts, because their contracts and terms can impact your budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment on internal control recommendations? Seeing none, any deliberation from the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Next item is credit cards. Thank you, Comptroller, for coming to the window. All right, so Bonner County has a number of credit cards with available credit limits ranging from $500 to $5,000 available limit. And so the available credit limit allows for access to the Bonner County budget immediately without a prior authorization or review. Bonner County does not have a, Bonner County Human Resource Policy regarding credit cards at this time. The available access to Bonner County budget has an inherent risk. It is recommended that the clerk's office reduce the available credit limit on each card to $1. Staff can contact the clerk's office to increase their credit limit after a review with the clerk's office. The reason is, is if you have so many straws quickly available, there's a significant potential to a budget. When we did our credit card workshop, a lot of people said they have a credit card to pay for their training. We don't need to have continued access to the budget at that dollar amount for those that are doing that. Contacting the comptroller to say, "I need to put this payment through." She raises it up. A lot of organizations use that in terms of a P-card. That's different for some different departments, such as emergency services, and that's why it's a work it out with the clerk. But, for example, I don't have a credit card as a commissioner, but if I had a credit card, I have no reason to have a $5,000 available spend in the Bonner County budget. I'm not doing anything to access that. And so that's part of doing an internal control for the number of credit cards that we have until we develop a different system. So that is a recommendation to reduce that so we have greater control over access to the Bonner County budget. It isn't whether or not, it isn't a someone's doing something wrong. The availability creates a risk, and if you consider if everybody used their dollar amount on their credit card all at the same time, how did we have an internal control to make sure that we could pay for that all at once? So the purpose is, let's rein that part in, and we need to have a policy. There is no policy in HR regarding the credit card usage. There is a document that the clerk has people sign saying that it could potentially be something that Bonner County Board of Commissioners doesn't pay for, but if you're on the side of you swipe that card, you expect us to pay for that bill. This is a way of gaining some control while we develop a true process with a true internal control. So with that, based on the information before us, I move that we implement the above-stated credit card available limit reduction of $1. Is there a second?
I'll second that for deliberation.
All right. We will, I didn't ask for public comment. Any public comment on this? All right, seeing none, we'll go into deliberation with the board.
So I do see that it may be an oversight or whatever the case is. We do need a policy regarding credit cards, and we should be working towards that right now. My personal belief is, is that it's going to, this is, this motion here is just going to create a lot of unnecessary work, moving all the credit cards down to a dollar, and then every department and every person going in and raising them back up probably to where they're at already. We should be addressing the issues, if there are any issues, with unnecessary spending, which I'm not aware of any at this time. There was one earlier, but that person no longer works with Bonner County, and I would like to work towards getting Bonner County's property back from that person.
So for, with respect to this, this is something that I actually spoke with the county clerk's office on, and they're actually in support of doing this. This is part, we need internal controls for the budget. And as far as the reference to the, a person being the cause, I don't want to give a comment on that. I will give you, I've, and I guess I would ask, have you looked at the spend, what people have been purchasing on these credit cards? Because within your time here, there has actually been a spend where I have said, I'm not willing to say that that is a taxpayer item, and the person tried to return, but they still had a cost associated with ordering a canvas print on the Bonner County credit card. And so if you had a process that, for example, if I had to call the clerk and say, "I want to commission this piece of artwork for my office," and she didn't raise my credit card, I wouldn't have that purchase. And so that has happened in real time. That's actually what triggered part of my review of, what are we using the credit cards for? When we looked at the workshop of what was needed outside of emergency services, which I'm including EMS, the sheriff's office, and the prosecutor, because they also have emergency service with a need to address defendants, what is other, what are we, the rest of us, using credit cards for? We're just not invoicing. And arguably, the comment that says, "We want to make it easier on staff to spend the money," is actually the reason we don't, you're not supposed to do it in business, because it's too easy. You don't make it easy to spend the money. I need to jump through a hoop to spend Bonner County money. And that hoop is not very big to just say to the comptroller, for example, "I know that we have a convention coming up in January. I need to pay for it. I could invoice it, but if I want to use a credit card, if I had one, I would go to her and say, 'I'm going to put this on the credit card,' and then she would raise it up." If the comptroller is agreeable to this process to help with reducing it, if you remember in the workshop, she wanted us to reduce the cards to at least 30. We didn't move very far in that direction. It means, for me, the bigger issue is not how hard it is for me to spend as a county employee, but why would we give that much access to a county budget without review? That's where the internal control issue is. Any comment?
No, I'm just going to reiterate that we do, human resource does need a policy to correct these problems. The situation you're talking about with the print was $200 and some dollars. If that person went down to $1 per se, as per your recommending here, and then they went to the clerk's office, and they asked for a $500 limit, and they approved, that purchase would have been made anyway. So we need some policies in place to make sure that these kinds of purchases do not happen. And when they do, that person that made it needs to be responsible for that purchase.
So the print was over $350, and if I called our clerk and said, "I need to increase my $1 line to 500 so I can buy a print for $350," I don't believe that the clerk would increase the credit limit. And that would have been your internal control to stop it, because you had a custom print. In this example, that was shipped. The shipping is not returnable. And the person is out a dollar amount of money because we didn't give an internal control. My other argument will be, you don't hand out credit cards first and say, "Let's build a policy later." We need to build a policy, and if we need credit cards, then you give credit cards. We don't do it backwards. That's the problem with not having an internal control. Anything else?
No, other than the fact, it almost sounds like you're asking the credit card limit to stay at $1, and every time I want to purchase something, I go and ask for a $350 limit so that I can go purchase a print, which I think is necessary. What I'm saying is, that person may think that he needs, or she needs, a $500 credit limit for whatever purpose that department is doing. At that point in time, that credit card limit gets raised to $500. Eight months down the road, that person purchases a $350 print. By doing this, it's not preventing that person from purchasing that item.
It is, because your available limit would be $1, and if you wanted to raise it, you would have to ask the clerk to raise it, and then it would drop it back down. So like if I, if you, you have a county credit card, you're going to pay for IAC January Convention. You would say, "Jessica, I need to spend $350. I'm going on this convention." You would have a time window that it got raised, and then it would drop back down. You're not going to stay at a higher rate. Otherwise, this would be pointless if we just said, "You can just systematically just get back up to whatever the limit is."
So to your point, you want everybody, when they purchase something on a credit card, to have preapproval ahead of time? That's what you're saying?
You should have approval before you spend Bonner County money. There should be. And that's the problem, is that there's not approval. And so there has to be an internal control. Because if you think of Bonner County, if you say we have a bucket of $5,000, but we all have the ability to take money out of that bucket, but nobody did any checks and balances, the bill for all of these credit cards, if we all went and spent, will come due. And in part, not saying this was the example, but looking at your cash balance is something that other departments have to do. Do we have the cash if we all in one department were to use that credit card? Do we have the available cash? We don't know, because we just spent the money before checking. And in part, this is a- because we just spent the money before checking. And in part, this is a, I think it's an agency-wide misunderstanding on budgets. When people see a budget, they think, my budget is $50,000, therefore I have $50,000. No, you don't. You just have $50,000 worth of stuff you need to spend. You need to manage your income, your outgoing. And in part, that's what the county budget needs to do. The idea that we have given out credit cards with no policy on credit cards in and of itself, in my opinion, should have every Bonner County commissioner saying, even if I wanted everybody to have a credit card, I'm going to pause until we develop a procedure for a credit card. But I can't say that everybody, it's, you shouldn't have to jump through a hoop. In private industry, nobody does. And I would argue, you would not give everyone in this room access to your PIN number to say, just have access and just, I believe you won't do it wrong. We're not supposed to do that. That's not being a good steward of public services. And it's not following best practices and internal controls for access to the budget. If we all who have credit cards spent the maximum amount, that could cripple the county because the bill would still come due, but we will have spent it. And we don't necessarily recover everything. Treasurer, found some money under some seat while I was talking.
I just want to make a comment, like, Cloris DeCosta, Bonner County treasurer. Yes, I'm an elected official. I'm not above following laws or policies put in place. So just to get that out there. One thing though, I just want to make sure that is noted, I don't have any issues with my credit card being put to a dollar. The majority of my credit fees such as public administration, public administration, sometimes it's the death of somebody that the treasurer has to be appointed the public administrator. We do have to secure assets. That's not always known when it's going to happen. Sometimes there are emergency statuses. I'm just going to ask, I don't have any issues with going to the clerk's office to ask for my $1 card to be raised to whatever I need at that particular moment in time. However, somebody at all times needs to be available in the clerk's office during regular business hours to raise that limit. If for some reason the comptroller's not there, I can't wait.
And so one of the things that clerk or the comptroller was going to do is look at for those similar to kind of like emergency services where their average need to spend wouldn't work to make that call. But for the average person, like for me, if I had a credit card, I have no need to have access to the county budget. I can do, for me, I believe I should actually do a reimbursement request, which is why I surrender. But it's not the same for every department. And she, we have to have some control that allows the comptroller to say, for example, Road and Bridge cannot survive on $1 because they have emergencies in the field. She would make that call, but we have to pull the availability down. So that concern on emergency service and your issue might have the comptroller saying, my recommendation is that the treasurer have this dollar amount available because of their historical spend of emergency. Those are outside the bill curve. The majority of these credit cards are not your situations. The EMS office has two credit cards. That's not the norm. We have prosecutor's office has over five credit cards. So it's, we have a lot of straws into the, the pool of Bonner County money. And she would make that.
And that's fine. I just wanted to point that out. That could, like, I don't have an issue with the limit being reduced to a dollar. Just, I do have to perform statutory duties that sometimes, I mean, I'll talk to the clerk and the comptroller, but there's just some things they're not going to be able to override. I have to be able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that was put out there.
No. Anybody else? There's Citizen 926.
Jim Lady Spokane, I'm just curious, on the credit cards, isn't there a, a way of having them reviewed monthly? When people make a purchase, they should be keeping receipts. There should be a, a log that shows all the purchases that are being made. They have to reconcile it. And then any purchases that aren't met with a receipt that's verified and approved would fall back on the person making the purchase?
Already in place.
It does change that. That's an after the fact, not an internal control. It's post spend. And so it wouldn't change the fact that if I spend on the Bonner County credit card, I owe the credit card company their money. And then it's up to Bonner County to argue with who's put the spend on it. But the county would still be responsible. And so that's, that's on the opposite end of an internal control.
So you, you have a lot of people that are spending when they shouldn't be then? That, that, it's a, it's a major problem then. I didn't realize that. Okay.
We don't have a process in place for this. We just have credit cards in our community. And so I, I think that, and in part, there's, there's no policy for it.
Asia, this is Bill. Can I inject? I think, there's one comment here that, and I haven't been a part of the discussion of limiting this, but as far as policies go, we do have the resolution authorizing Bonner County employees to, to commit up to $1,000. You're aware of that one, right?
Yes.
Okay. So how does that dovetail with this? Because I mean, I guess if the, if the rationale is that we don't want to have all of those credit cards, you know, utilized at one time, taxing the budget in a way we can't anticipate, we do have a resolution that authorizes employees to commit funds up to 1,000. And in some cases, like Road and Bridge Department, beyond that.
Right.
How do we, how do we dovetail those two things?
Where is the policy that explains what it is that people can commit and the process and procedure for the control? And there's cards that have limits that exceed $1,000. So your risk is what you can do to the budget. And so saying what, and essentially kind of what you're highlighting is kind of what I see as an issue. We're giving permission to spend without controlling the spend and how it happens and what it looks like. So for example, with the example of the photograph that was commissioned, based on the $1,000 you can commit, but is that a public use of funds? And in part, when you go to HR policy, it requires more for us to take a look at of, that's you.
That's me.
So that, that's my issue. And so I wanted the discussion on, we have credit cards, we have available access to the county budget, and we don't have a policy, but we're guaranteeing the availability to spend out of the budget. Clerk, or, sorry.
I just wanted to see if that, if the resolution had been factored into the equation.
It did. There's no HR policy. And it just says you can spend guaranteed 1,000, but your limit's greater than $1,000 on some of these cards. They're not, it's, you're not capped at $1,000. I know, I believe, before this current comptroller, a lot of these cards had a $5,000 spend option.
Jessica Stephanie, Bonner County comptroller, for the record. I think the focus isn't necessarily on restricting staff's ability to make a purchase, but we would like to shift the direction, right? I think that credit cards get used a lot as a convenience, where if they were planned ahead of time, we could have done the direct billing option. And that's what we're trying to limit, right? In all honesty. So it should not be a heavy lift. If we try this for a few months and the clerk's office is just overwhelmed with requests to adjust the credit card limits, then we can look at it a little bit differently. But I would like to at least try the method and see where the shortfalls are and see what happens. That's, that's my perspective.
And I think that you did clarify. One thing I forgot to say is, and part of it, some of what the credit cards get used for are just things that you could invoice. It's just easier to use the credit card. And that's part of what we're trying to do is shift it. Because one thing we don't get to see is, a lot of people pay for training in the organization, but we don't all see it because it's on a credit card because it's not invoiced. So do we have the opportunity to piggyback on something that the organization has paid for? We don't really see it because of the way that we're, we're not streamlining it. And when you look at the internal control recommended above, that automation and streamlining through a system that has more visibility is beneficial to the entire organization, not just a single department.
And we're also aware that certain departments use their credit cards for like a monthly subscription, which obviously would need to be taken into account for. There's, there are situations where you're not allowed to do direct bill. We understand that. And that's what we want to work with everybody on. It may take a minute to get used to, but I don't, it's not, we are not trying to prevent you from making purchases. It's just in the way we go about it.
All right. With that, any more deliberation from the board?
No.
Okay. No thoughts from any staff members? Nobody had a comment, staff member? All right. Roll call vote?
Mr. Williams?
Yes?
No.
Mr. Bradshaw?
No.
All right. Motion fails. All right. Next one, last one on my mouth. HSA benefits. Human Resources currently does not prorate HSA contributions to new employees. As such, a new employee that enters the organization at the end of the fiscal year receives the same amount as an employee that enters the organization at the beginning of the fiscal year. Additionally, current staff receive the entire HSA contribution at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so when you're doing a review, one of the things that happens kind of in plain words is, if I work for Bonner County today and I got my dollar amount today, and then I leave the next day, I have left with organizational money when that money is intended to be for the full year. The other one is, is if I come into it at the end of the fiscal year and I'm eligible for benefits, that HSA benefit is this full amount for the whole year because we pay it at one lump sum. And so we lose money with the exit and then the entrance of some people. And then in some cases, and I can't remember the numbers because I did not bring the numbers, but we can show the loss of doing it both ways. So the suggested motion here is that new hires will receive a prorated HSA benefit paid out over the remaining pay periods from the date of the benefit eligibility. And starting the next fiscal year, existing Bonner County employees will receive HSA, I'm not putting that part in. Isn't that right? I was going to knock that part off. Only because, unless, did we give an answer from our insurance of whether or not we could do it now? We can't do it now. That's right. I'm trying to remember my conversations. Starting the next fiscal year, existing Bonner County employees will receive HSA benefits deposited over the 24 pay periods in that fiscal year. That way, there's not a loss on either end. One of the things that does happen to a budget is the way that we're paying means that a budget such as EMS that is dependent on cash flow has all of that money pulled out of their budget all at the beginning, which sets them on rocky ground as we go through the fiscal year. So this will help protect that in the next fiscal year. The reason I put it down as a vote now is so that HR can move forward without having to remember to come back to do anything on this particular item for the next fiscal year. But to address in real time as we add new staff, giving the 2,500 as if you were a part of the full fiscal year is a greater benefit to some staff versus other staff. So with that motion, is there any public comment, or second, second to the motion? All right. Any public comment on this? Mr. Bowman?
Hey, Bowman, Bonner County, fantastic idea. That's the way it's done in much of the private sector and for good reason. Did I understand you correctly to say that in the next fiscal year, that will also apply to?
Current employees.
Okay.
We've already front loaded all of the county this year. And we have to work out with our insurance on that.
Yeah, understood. And, and to, to your point, it's not just EMS that has this issue. It's really countywide. It's every department.
Yes. Any other public comment? I couldn't see. You flashed a finger at me. I didn't know which one it was. It's, it's stressful times right now. All right. Hearing, no public comment. Deliberation by the board.
I think it's a great motion. I wish it would have been in place years ago. Would it saved the county and the taxpayers thousands of dollars.
All right.
Probably wouldn't have saved a many. And I think you are treading on very rocky ground when you're messing with the employee benefits. Just something to think about.
So I, I'll actually address the comment that it wouldn't save us anything. It actually would. So HR actually pulled metrics on how much money went out of the door through people that left the organization mid-year but received the, I want to say it's $2,500. Is that, wait, did you bring it with you? Well, can I just have it? That way I can address that. Because the leakage of the budget is what we're looking at. And that is a leakage of the budget. And for the people that are long-term staff, it means if we didn't let money walk out of the door, could we have given a better budget to the people that are here? That's part of what internal controls are supposed to be. So I will snatch this.
This is the terminations.
All right. You want to just say it that way? You don't have, because you're just going to tell it to me and I'm going to repeat you. Can you do it right there? Thank you.
Kevin Rothenberger, Human Resources. So I looked at the HSA contributions for new hires that would have been, had they been prorated from 10-1 of 23 to now, the county could have saved approximately $26,500 from 10-1 of 23 current. For the terminations for the same time period, it amounted to $27,250. So by going to that proration, the county would save considerable amount of money because what has happened is people will get their full amount in October and turn around and leave in November and December. And so there's no way to recoup that money back once it's already submitted to the, to the bank.
So Kevin, so just to clarify, so a new hire gets hired in September, collects 1,500 to 2,500 depending on how they file, correct?
Correct.
So that person gets that amount of money for working here for a month.
Correct.
Versus the other employees that have been here for a whole year, 12 months, collect the same amount. That's what we're trying to clean up.
Under the previous guidelines, the new hire would get their funding, the full amount, even though they only worked part of the year, then on 10-1 would also receive the funding for that benefit year. And so that's what we want to step away from. And the same with terminations. People get their full funding in October for that benefit year, but then turn around and leave in November and December.
You're going to have to come up, Clerk Rosio.
Well, you can add, so the extreme example, if somebody's hired in September and leaves at the end of October, give that example.
They would receive both fundings. They'd get their new hire, full amount. And if they were here for the distribution in October, which is mid to end of October, they'd get that distribution also. And then they could turn around and leave with all the money.
So I hope this passes because we've just told people to apply for a job in October and then two weeks in, and you got five grand from the county. But so that, that's to clarify that it isn't just a request. It's a leakage of the budget and then it's money at $50,000. What could Bonner County have done with $50,000 essentially into the county to help move us in the direction we need to go if that wasn't an issue? And which is inclusive of, is there a better program that we could be on for better benefits? So I want to clarify and thank Kevin for pulling out the data on this review because we're looking at HR processes and that is a considerable savings that we can have. Any other comment from the public or Commissioner Bradshaw, did you want to respond to the data presented?
No, the money saved could have bought me and Ronna a hairpiece.
Okay.
No way I got included on that.
All right. With that, roll call vote?
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
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 All right. Look at that. 1026, right on time. We have a presentation from our Selkirk Fire Chief. We see a lot of fire people here in the hall. You're going to be right here. You've got, presentation is online, so it's all ready for you to share your item here. So you can introduce yourself and kind of, also your years of experience, Chief Armstrong, and what you've reached out to me on. And then part of, part of this is understanding what is available to Bonner County. A lot of people have reached out to me with their ideas on Bonner County Emergency Ambulance District. And Chief Armstrong was one of those who had some ideas. I am a, before we make decisions, let's hear all the information person. And so thank you for taking the time out of your day to come. And so we'll move forward with his presentation from Selkirk Fire.
Perfect.
We've got more seats if you guys aren't afraid. We can make people not give, like, you can't do a, they're in the hall. They're pretending there might be an emergency call somewhere out there. All right.
Am I advancing the slides here or?
Yes, you will advance your slides.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. It's great to see a room full of people that are here for this very important topic. I did email you, Commissioner Williams, and I emailed Chief Lindsay as well, when the news of this started breaking with the concern that I did not support any reduction in service in EMS. I did share some ideas with you. We had a conversation, and that's a matter of public record, about the ways the fire service could help if there was a short gap or if there was any challenges that we could help EMS overcome. I'm not one of the 27 people that Chief Lindsay talked about walking through the door to tell you we can do it better. I don't have the data to tell you we can do it better, and we may not be able to do it better. But I want to be it better. But I want to be the 28th person that walks through the door and says, we're not asking all right questions, and we should probably be having more collaboration and more conversations about what the future looks like in Bonner County. As I mentioned to you in an email, Commissioner Williams, last week we met with the JPA Board, and the JPA Board is not interested or seeking new members into the JPA. However, they understand that we may be part of the solution in the future if things don't go as planned or the recovery isn't achieved. So thank you very much for being here. See if I can figure out how to advance slides. Spacebar?
I think if you right-click, like just click on your right side, it moves it forward.
Left side, there you go. So for a lot of folks online and a lot of folks in this room probably don't know me, they probably knew there was a fire, new fire chief for Selkirk. And so this slide just kind of gives you a snapshot of my background, a little bit about me. Had the opportunity to serve in executive leadership as a fire chief for a little over a decade. And during that time, I've overseen EMS service delivery at the ALS level, both transport and non-transport. And I've been able to evaluate those systems through strategic planning. I've been involved with standard to cover and a lot of deep dives into systems and evaluation of the system and an understanding of what the community expects from their system. You know, a lot of aspects from the private industry, since I do have some private industry background, I owned a business with my dad for about eight years. And there's a lot of things in private industry that we could learn from, specifically the ability to be agile and specifically with the way we treat our employees. And so I, you'll hear a lot of concepts in my presentation, probably refer back to that in my slide deck. We tried it, we can't do that, that doesn't work, that'll never happen here. These are all excuses that us and the fire service fall back on to try to hold on to our tradition and try to not advance and not try to actually ask ourselves, why are we doing what we're doing? We don't like change for change's sake, and we certainly don't want to just make change because it feels good. But we should be constantly asking ourselves, why are we doing what we're doing? Everything from why does a fire engine go to a medical aid, to why do we staff the stations the way we staff them, why are they placed where they are in the community? And so there's a lot of things that we need to be asking ourselves why. And this is a great quote that I use quite often, the most damaging phrase in the English language is why we've done, always done it this way. So as we go through some of these things today, I just ask you to keep an open mind. Conversations never hurt. In fact, I used to love to debate, and I can't really debate politics anymore, but I used to love to debate because I found 50% of the time, I was wrong. And so it helped me reaffirm that, oh, okay, I actually am wrong, or it reaffirmed the fact that my beliefs were solid. So workshops, debates, things like that can, can always be helpful. So why are we here? Why am I here as your fire chief? Why did I reach out? Why did I offer to speak publicly? Bonner County EMS is a partner in our, in our community. Their success is our success, their challenges are our challenges because our mission overlaps. We also take a look at the history of Bonner County EMS, and I should say EMS, not Bonner County EMS, but EMS in Bonner County. And there's some sordid history there. There's some significant failures where the fire services had to step in at midnight and roll ambulances into the fire stations, and there have been some significant failures. So those of us that don't pay attention to history or learn from history are doomed to repeat it. There are some assumptions in my presentation, so I apologize if there has been a study done, but based on everything that I was able to look at over the last five to six years, we haven't really done a system evaluation. There's been no standard to cover, there's been no study evaluation, there's been no look at what is expected from the community for their EMS system, something that I would expect to see a third-party consultant come in from outside and take a look at. Consultants are often a bad term because you're paying somebody a lot of money to come in and tell you either what you already know or tell you what you want them to say. But the reality is it removes the emotion, it removes the object, or it adds some objectivity. Biggest thing for me is patience. Everything that I do in the fire department, there are some things that I do for men and women in our fire department to make sure that their lives, that they're safe, that their lives are better. But everything is centered on the community. We are here for them. And so I hear a lot of talk about funding, I hear a lot of talk about jobs, positions, and those are all great things because we have to keep, we have to take good care of our employees. But I heard the fire departments mentioned more in the meetings that I watched on YouTube than I heard patience mentioned. And I think at some point, we have to take a step back and look at, what are we doing for our patients? And what is the best thing we can do for our community? Another thing is we want to ensure we don't fail again, and this isn't, this, you know, Bonner County EMS has never failed, but the system itself has, you know, a history of being challenging in all of North Idaho based on the history that I've researched. From Cootney County all the way up to Boundary County, there's been challenges, right? And so I think we want to make sure that we're all in this together. And I put it here, I want to make sure that Grandma gets the help she needs, but you know, when it's her worst day of her life, or when she's fallen and she's home alone and she needs to be picked up, we want to make sure that someone's coming to help her. Whether it's a BLS assessment, ALS assessment, a transport to hospital, or just simply putting her back in bed, I don't care if it's a white ambulance, I don't care if it's a red fire truck, I just want to make sure that Grandma's taken care of. And then of course, this should probably be higher on the list, but it just came naturally as I built this PowerPoint. You know, we care about our people, we care about our employees. And I saw this during the reimagination of Selkirk and the successor JPA, and when the city of Sandpoint was pulling out of the JPA, I had meaningful conversations with all the staff to let them know the Board of Commissioners were committed to the new JPA, the Board of Commissioners were committed to them. And the last thing I want to see is uncertainty drive away our seasoned paramedics. I don't want to have Chief Lindsay dealing with turnover, vacancies, we get inexperienced folks up here. I run a few medical aides, not a lot, but probably between 30 and 40 medical aides since I've been here and either been a deputy chief or the fire chief. And I'm impressed with the level of service here. I'm impressed with camaraderie on the boots on the ground. Most of these people are friends, most of them get together and train. Our stations are a mile apart, so it's really easy to do. And then, last but not least, and I'm not a legal expert, and I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV, but there is some case law about ambulance districts, and I was able to find some different articles about it, and I was able to look at the Idaho Code just enough to be more confused. My concern is if this district goes away, it may not come back in its true form. So I think we have to fight for this district and fight to keep it intact. There was some discussion about an ambulance district board, and I know that's allowed by Idaho Code. I'm going to speak bluntly. There's some issues. And I think playing hot potato with EMS and tossing it off to an appointed Board of Commissioners while there's problems is probably not the answer. I think you as elected folks are finding out that one of the challenges of leadership is we step into these roles and we inherit the problems of the past. And so as we step into this space that we're in, dealing with these issues, and I do say "we" because we're all in this together, it's, I'm not going to sit at one end of the ship and say, well, the ship is sinking, but it's going down on that end. Guess what? We're all going to go down together. So we're here to fight together. So I think it would be a poor decision, so my personal and professional opinion is that you don't yard sail this onto another commission until we get these things back on track, we get stakeholders engaged, and we get, give Chief Lindsay the resources he needs to make this thing a success. And then, you know, the biggest thing for me is redundancy, right? I always have to ask myself, why, why are we going to certain calls? I get asked in the community, why is the fire engine going to medical aids? And we can sit down and have those conversations, whether you have advanced DMTs, whether you have paramedics on the fire engine. There's patient care conversations I have with the public all the time. You know, I'm sure that if Chief Lindsay could have dual paramedics on every ambulance, he probably would do that because you get a critical patient, there are skills that you can be doing simultaneously. As you travel around the country, everywhere except Sandpoint, strangely enough, but everywhere you drive around the country, you see a Lowe's and a Home Depot. There's a whole story with that. College buddies, went to school together, someone stole someone's idea, I don't know the whole story. But every town that you go to, you see a Lowe's, and within a half a mile, there's a Home Depot or vice versa. I think Home Depots come first and Lowe's came after. So as I look around our county, I see ambulance station, fire station, ambulance station, fire station, ambulance station, fire station. I'd be silly not to sit here and say, at some point I scratch my head and go, is there an economy of scale here? Are we thinking about building facilities together? Are we thinking, I know that's not, we don't like to talk about buildings right now, but are we building facilities together? Are we looking at co-locating? I heard you mention, Commissioner Corn, about the building in Ponderay. Before we built that building, did we pick up a phone and call Northside Fire District and say, what does it look like if we co-locate? There's going to be problems. You put EMS folks and fire folks together, there's going to be some stuff for leadership to deal with. But at the end of the day, if that's managed correctly and you have strong leadership, coming out the other side is going to be camaraderie that you're not going to get if they're not co-located. So just some thoughts, I'm not trying to move into your new building, Chief Lindsay, I'm not trying to do that at all. I'm just saying that as I look at the system, these are the things that popped up based on my experience. So why are we not here? So the fire service is not trying to take over the ambulance. I got here and I said, within a couple months, I don't want ambulances. I've said that continuously, and that is still my stance. The narrative that the fire departments are, want to take over, it's kind of worn out. We're past that. Can we move past that and can we actually have meaningful conversations about what this looks like if we work together? You know, and I think the fact that we're in this room having conversations about a potential, I hope it's a fiscal speed bump, but a potential, potential fiscal issue tells me that ambulances aren't a lucrative business. They aren't a cash cow. I've been involved in enough systems to know that there's challenges, and specifically where I came from, the fire departments were having to augment the ambulance budget to keep the ambulances on the road. Now, a lot of that had to do with pay and benefits and how expensive those employees were. But, you know, at the cost of $1.4 million to keep an ambulance on the road, your recoverables are not going to keep that on the road. So, so what do I want? Again, kind of a little bit back to why I'm here, why I put myself in the middle of this. And I understand putting myself in the middle of this and standing up and talking in front of all you puts a giant target on my back. That's okay, I didn't step on the leadership because it was comfortable. I stepped in the leadership because I had a passion for it. Any solution that puts more public safety employees on the streets, more firefighters in my firehouse is a solution I'm willing to have a conversation about. Because we are grossly understaffed. Our staffing levels are below dangerous by any standard when you look at the community we protect and our community risk. I'd kind of like to know why we keep revisiting this. I understand that the previous system was completely different, and if I had a conversation with Chief Lindsay, he would probably tell me, well, when Big Sky Ambulance left, they were a private ambulance company. I get that, it's a completely different situation. But it's actually more concerning that we're here because now you have an ambulance district that has a tax base, and we're still having conversations about whether or not this is going to be sustainable. And I do believe the system's sustainable, but I've been around for a few minutes, and when you start seeing some of the cracks in the ice, you have to start having conversations and asking questions. I think we all, all want a system that runs lean yet efficient and is coordinated, and I mean coordinated between all first responders, and I think, you know, for the most part, we have great coordination. Bonner County EMS provides us training, I wish we could get more of it, but I always feel like the coordination could be better, especially when we start running incidents, multidiscipline incidents, large-scale incidents, there needs to be more coordination, probably even bring our brothers and sisters in law enforcement in this conversation as well. And then I think we need a system that is responsive to its stakeholders. I'm going to have another moment of being really honest here. I've watched some of the videos, and I've had meetings and lunches and coffees with people that I've never met before over this last week and a half. It's been a whirlwind. I don't know why people call me, but people reach out to me and people want to have conversations, and maybe that goes to how I build relationships. But not all the stakeholders are happy. And I understand I can't make everybody happy as a chief, I don't make everybody happy. So if one or two or three or four people don't like me, but if everybody in my fire department was mad at me or upset, I would have to probably take a deep breath and go walk and look in the mirror and say, okay, what am I doing wrong as far as relationships? And so to me, watching some of the meetings, and I saw the outburst, and this meeting is not a place to have an emotional outburst or name-calling or any of that stuff. And we broached on some of that in one of the meetings, and I felt bad for the folks involved. That's just not, that's not my style, but I need to, I need to mention that and get that off my chest. And then last but not least, that came up in our strategic planning, you know, I don't want ambulances, but I would love to have paramedics on fire engines. And I don't think there would be a single paramedic with Bonner County EMS that wouldn't want that extra set of hands on a critical patient. We've got to stop looking at the fire departments as a threat. We're not a threat. This is probably the most important slide up here because it's what the community wants. So we recently released a community survey, pushed it on social media in different places, I believe we even have it published in the newspaper. And coming back out of that was a series of questions. We just basically asked them, what do you want from your fire district? What are your expectations? And obviously, those three bullet points are the ones that kept reoccurring in all of the answers and the fill the blank, fill-in-the-blank answers, more volunteers, more training, more firefighters. We could sit here and beat up the whole volunteer thing, I don't think Chief Lindsay's going to be able to solve his issues with volunteers. I heard it come up, I heard the question raised, not something that I would support, not something that I would even see how he could manage it based on the challenges we're having in the fire service. A volunteer, I'm a baseball guy. So to me, a volunteer is a bullpen or is a bench, right? You have a volunteer that gets the call, 10, 15-minute drive. We had a volunteer actually that had 11-minute drive to the fire station. Then you got to think, they've got two or three minutes to get everything started, drive out the door, another 10-minute response time, you're looking at between 20 to 30 minutes till a volunteer gets on scene. That's a great bench, that's a great depth. By the time they get there in 20 to 30 minutes, our first-in crew is gassed, they're ready to come out, they're ready to take a break, they need additional logistical support, and that's how I envision a volunteer program. Anymore getting people to come in and stay at the station all day or pull volunteer shifts with the demands that are on our life, it's just, it's not realistic anymore. The two graphs that are up there are specific questions that we asked about EMS because I got here and it is a very different system than I was used to. Not EMS-centric, Bonner County EMS, independent ambulance district, I wanted to learn a little bit more. And I wanted to find out, should we even be going to medical aids? What does it look like if the ambulance goes, gets there, then decides they want us? Now you're looking at that turnout time, response time, reaction time. So I really wanted to make sure that we were meeting, and there's more to a strategic plan, but I really wanted to make sure that we are meeting the community's expectation. So these two questions asked them, should we be going to medical aids? And then the second one is asking them to rank the different disciplines that we practice in the fire service, which one of them is EMS. And you can see the community's response. They recognize our mission overlaps with Bonner County EMS, and that's their expectation. Little background on our JPA. So it was formed in 2014. Westside Fire Districts and City of Sandpoint, Westside, Sagel, and the City of Sandpoint came together. Really what we were looking for, and I say "we," I wasn't here for that time, but at the time, the JPA was a, was a goal. The next goal was going to be a fire authority or a county-wide fire district. That was pretty much laid out in documents, it's been out in the public for a while. The JPA was the step to get there. We were looking at economy of scale, cost savings, ability to have a larger employee pool, to be able to shift where needed. There are a couple things that happened. Idaho Bill 389 came through, and that was supposed to help us merge fire departments. There's actually some language in there, it really prevents us from doing that without causing a significant fiscal crisis to those organizations that are merging. The other thing that happened is in late 2024, City of Sandpoint pulled out of the JPA. Well, I should say, actually how it went down, the City of Sandpoint submitted notice that they would like to have a conversation about whether they were going to renew or not. The conversations ensued, and based on closed-door conversations and open-door conversation that I had, they weren't speaking the same language. The districts and the city wanted different things. The city wanted its own autonomy, they wanted its own brand, they didn't care about the economy of scale so much, they didn't see the cost savings, and the districts wanted to grow. And I don't think the City of Sandpoint wanted to grow at that level. Now, that's my professional opinion, having been a City of Sandpoint employee and now working for the districts, obviously I'm biased towards the districts maybe a little bit, but I can look back on that and say that that's really how it unfolded based on some of the conversations I had. As soon as that happened, we'll talk a little bit about the successor JPA, but as soon as that happened, you had people from districts having conversations, which is a completely is a completely different conversation than trying to have folks from a fire district have a conversation with cities. If you like research and you like to read and you like to learn, here's some references I threw up here. I'm not going to belabor this just for the sake of time, but there are a couple Idaho code sections that are interesting to read that specifically deal with JPAs. I think because of the challenges with 389, you're going to see JPAs start to be more popular, specifically in the fire service, because our ability to merge is inhabited. I also know that regionalization is not necessarily a good concept for North Idaho. I understand the concept of big government and the fears that go along with that. But when you're talking about your local fire districts kind of come together, really what we're trying to do is we're trying to save money. We're trying to break down those silos. We're trying to create more resources for a community that might have a significant fire. If you took Northside for instance, and we had a fire at Walmart, God forbid, the amount of resources they would need to mitigate that incident are going to far exceed what they have. The cost savings, and I'll just give you an upfront example, the cost savings for the three districts, they have me instead of having three different fire chiefs. So you can start to see, and I mean, that's a very high level example, but you can start to see where the cost savings come when you start working together. So if you don't like regionalization, don't like big fire districts, you know, we're fiercely independent up here and I get that, but start thinking about it from the fact of what makes it safer for the men and women, boots on the ground, they're making entry to go in and get Mrs. Smith out of the fire. Idaho Association of Counties has a position paper and a presentation online. You can search, really good information on their PowerPoint. And then Cooney County EMS is an interesting system. I don't know that much about it. I know enough to just, again, get a little bit more confused, but it's a JPA that was born out of a provider that failed. And then if you want to dig even deeper, go to the south part of state, Ada County has several JPAs and some very creative JPAs between like road and bridge and a public works department. There was, there was some really creative stuff that they did down there that I thought was kind of neat. So we kind of talked about this and I've touched on most of these, so I'm not going to read them word for word. But obviously, we're looking at purchasing, we're looking at employees, cost savings, but making the organization a little bit more agile. And last but not least, our, I believe, at least our training program has become more robust because we have more resources, we can pull multiple engines together, and we're all headed the same way. So we weren't without issues, and I think some of these were addressed in the successor JPA, although it hasn't been around for that long. So we will continue to need to run that thing out for a couple of years to see how it does. You know, the biggest thing was how do we measure success? Is success, we finish the year under a budget? Is success, we go to fires and no more, no new fires start? How are we measuring that? So that's really a component of strategic planning and something that we're still diving into to really ask ourselves, what does that look like? Representation by the partner agencies in the past. Again, City of Sandpoint kind of ran things, treated everybody like a contract. There wasn't really a lot of voice at the table. Through the relationships and through the way we developed our policies and procedures in our new JPA, everyone sitting at the table has equal voice. And we've even brought an outside voice in, somebody that is not in the JPA to sit on the JPA board to be an objective voice in the room. One of the challenges with any member agencies or any, I'm sorry, any future member agencies will be the host agency. It will have to be approval at the JPA level for any kind of fire district or anybody else that wants to join in the future. And then all those employees will have to end up going to the host agency, which again, will have to get approved by that host agency because that is a, it's a significant burden for the, or can be a significant burden and a risk for the host agency. So in our successor JPA, we really focused on these bullet points. Having been assigned in my last two months, I would say as deputy chief, having been assigned and kind of slid over to be the district representative, I had the unique opportunity of working for Sandpoint, but advocating for the districts as we built the successor JPA. And these are some of the things that we really focused on. And I think it was centralized decision making. We pushed more decision making to the JPA level. We started working and developing bylaws to actually guide where the decision making is, is going to take place. And then the big thing which caused a lot of chaos with the, with the removal of the City of Sandpoint was the revised termination clause. And so now it's a year notice to withdraw from there, from the JPA. Real quick snapshot of our financials. So this is all three fire districts. So when I talk about the JPA, I am including Northside, although they are contract agency. That we're all running together as one big happy family. So this is our combined budget. The big thing here is the amount of reserves that we have. And I think those are sound fiscal practices that happened before, and I will give the city credit for making sure that we had found sound fiscal practices and making sure that we continued to operate within our means and kept those reserves intact. We just purchased a fire engine for the Westside Fire District out of capital reserves that were allocated. We work a 4896, just like EMS did or does currently. 25 employees with one limited term. You know, our challenge because of budgets is going to continue to be aging apparatus, older fire stations, and recruitment. The reality is, is that we live within our means and we have to use duct tape and baling wire sometimes to make things happen. So this is a population graph we've used previously, and it shows the population in Bonner County. Is anybody in here surprised that Bonner County is growing? Okay, just making sure. Something I just figured out yesterday. Versus firefighters on duty, and I'm sure EMS, these demographics impact EMS just as much as they impact the fire service. So there's conversations about schedule, and there was conversations about, potentially FLSA was mentioned, but this is what guides minimum wage and hours and overtime. There is something, and I will, I will leave this up for a minute because there's something at the bottom that is key. So the, the top bullet points are job descriptions, the bottom bullet points are categories that those job descriptions have to fit in. So when you talk about a 7K exemption, you're really talking about this section that allows us to take a 56 hour work week employee and raise that threshold for overtime. So right now, my firefighters are getting what we call built in or FLSA overtime, but you're looking at a minimal number of hours per paycheck. Tammy, what's that number again? 9.15 hours. Okay. So that law allows us to raise our overtime threshold and pay them at a different rate. So I did some math, right? I heard a couple of things in the meeting, and this is just an example of the cost. And I don't think it's as big of a cost as some expect, but when you add it up for 34 employees, I think you're looking at a significant cost. So making an assumption of $25 an hour, a 40 hour employee working a 56 hour work week is going to get 832 hours of overtime per year. You look at the total compensation there, 832. Now, you move that employee to FLSA work period under the 7K exemption, same assumption on dollar per hour, you're looking at 75, 774 for total compensation. $7,400 really isn't a significant number until you times it by 34 employees, and then that's where you can look at that being a large number. I've heard a couple, or a couple of things thrown out there about different schedules. I think if I put my other hat on for a minute and advocate for EMS folks, my concern ultimately comes back to want to make sure that the system succeeds, want to make sure that people stay, is moving into a four platoon. So from the 4896 to a two on, six off, you either got to hire new people or you're going to reduce your daily staffing. That's fine. Let's just be honest with the community and say the daily staffing is going to reduce. Maybe we don't need as many people as we have on. But the big concern for me is that an EMS employee is going to lose 11 hours of overtime per week. You equate that using the same assumptions, and I'm making assumptions here, but you equate that to $25 an hour, that's $830 a paycheck. Anybody in here prepared to lose $830 a paycheck? What happens when pay gets cut? Spokane, AMR's hiring, I mean, it's the reality, right? And next thing you know, that the level of service that we've lowered because we went to four platoon, now all of a sudden, we're starting to have staffing levels. And I'm not saying that people are leaving. I know that they're loyal employees and I think the world of our EMS folks, but that's, folks already can't afford to live here. And now you're asking them to, to take another, another pay hit, unless the plan is to turn around and then raise their salary. And I support that, but let's have an honest conversation with, with the public and let them know because we're trying to solve a fiscal issue. So the next steps, and these are just basically some, there's a little bit of personal recommendations as well, some professional recommendations in here. I think the county really needs to decide what they want from a system. I feel strongly that a consultant should come in and take a look at the system, look at the valuation, look at the standard to cover. You know, for a system that runs 5,000 calls a year, that isn't a significant call volume for a county. However, with our rural, our rural nature of our county and some of our response times, obviously, any reduction in service is going to be a concern. And I don't care, talked to Chief Lindsay via email. He said, well, it's not going to affect your three districts. Well, the problem is, is you start reducing at the outskirts, it is going to affect the center of the, center of the county because the system runs as a system and less resources available in the system are going to have implications. And then, you know, of course, if the county is interested in either hearing additional information or wants to sit down and have a talk about what we can do to support in the long term, short term, whatever that looks like, the JPA board would request that there be a formal, formal request at the JPA board. Any discussion should have a plan to deal with the agency debt. We recommend workshops. And then, of course, there needs to be built a consensus with stakeholders. And that's really the toughest bullet point up here, right? Is getting everybody to just take a deep breath, push pride aside, set aside their ego and have real conversations. So I'm a, I said earlier, I was a football, or a baseball guy. I'm also a Packers fan. So how I became a Packers fan, long story. One of the stories that comes from Vince Lombardi.
I'm going to say short story.
It is very short story.
You said long story.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, oh, no, no, a long story about how I became a Packer fan, but I skipped over that. Yes, I'll keep, I'll keep it brief, but I think it's, it's poignant for this. He asked, how can you take the Packers with a bunch of no name players and win all these divisions and champions? And he goes, we are exceptionally good at the basics. And I think we really need to focus on that. He walked in his first day on the job to a football team and said, gentlemen, this is a football. And the new JPA, the successor JPA, it's really allowed us in the fire service to really focus on those basics. We've gotten back to the basics with our training, gotten back to the basics of focusing on what does the community want. And I feel like we've really gotten away from potential kingdom building, and I think that's important. These other up here, because I know I'm pressed for time, these other up here are stuff that we would have to work through, right? The staffing model, I'm concerned about going, although I would love to work two on, six off, sign me up. I'm concerned about that because the camaraderie of the crews that are on, now it's not going to be the same crews working in Station 3 and Selkirk Station 3, right? So you're going to lose a little bit of that. And then we have to do what we have to do, but there's a concern there for me. There's some other solutions up here, and I'll bounce through these really quickly. Obviously, co-locating facilities, it's probably a little late for that. But, you know, those are conversations we should be having in the future. And potentially, a fire doesn't belong in these conversations. We feel we do because of the overlap of our missions. There's public-private partnerships, there's other EMS entities out there that we could be looking at partnerships, Air Methods, Bonner General Health. And then, you know, the elephant in the room, nobody ever wants to talk about, is Countywide Fire Department. And I know nobody wants to talk about it. And I know it's perceived as the fire service being predatory, but at the end of the day, we need to figure out if that's the right answer. And if we have a conversation or we have a discussion, we have a workshop, and we walk away going, that isn't the right. We can memorialize that, we can frame it, we can hang it on the wall, and we cannot be here in five, six years having the same conversation about whether it's where we should go. You know, for 150 to 200 years, the American Fire Service has always found a way to rise to the occasion and serve the public. And I want the commissioners and the community, those in the room and those watching, to know that should the unexpected happen or should we face challenges in the future, the firefighters in Bonner County are no exception, and we will rise to the occasion and we will help any way that we can. My contact information is up here. Should anybody in the audience or anybody online want to reach out, feel free. If you can scan that QR code, that takes you right to our community survey. I would love to hear from everybody in here outside of, there's nothing about this meeting, but outside of this meeting, I'd love to hear about the fire districts. Let us know which fire district you live in. Fill out the survey, it takes you about 10, 12 minutes. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to fly into our next agenda item only because we need to make a decision and release some people, but I want to say thank you to Selkirk Fire. Whether or not, whatever direction Bonner County EMS goes into, it's important to have the information. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to come up and represent your view on it because we need to come together as a, what are we doing for Bonner County as a whole? I'm going to slide into the next agenda item that says EMS Weekly Budget Report because we need to make a board decision really quickly. And then I'll open up for questions, and then you include both of those topics as your, as your questions. I'm going to start with a real quick, this doesn't have a motion on it. We need to go through approving the TAN on EMS. And so Clerk Rosedale, how do you want, because we're going to leave it at the same number, but I'm seeing the emails come through from the bank on this one on who needs to sign and they want it back quickly essentially. So.
Jeff is going to present it. If there are any questions, I can work first and.
One question that I want someone to clarify, and so if you weren't part of this, is the Bonner County Ambulance District is going to take a tax anticipation loan in the amount of $2 million. Mike, and I'll, you can come up, Chief Lindsay. The only thing that, kind of the verbiage on this one was my question before, it just says accepted and agreed by Bonner County EMS. We're not changing any, I thought we were changing to district.
Because they did the DBA.
Okay.
To reflect that. Yes, see. Or can I say?
So they did it at the top, so this bottom signature line didn't need to change? So the signature line still says Bonner County EMS when one of our questions was, we were needing it to say ambulance district.
Sure, everybody, everybody here was in on that email. Yeah, so. Who has the final documents?
I have the final document. On the signature line, the name didn't change. On the heading of the document, the name did change. Do we need to ask for a different name or do we just sign it and move forward and say that we're accepting that they accepted DBA on the front part?
Bill still online?
That's why I was trying to rush to this one because he was probably like, oh. Bill, are you there? So I'm going to call it this, and then we will ask Umpqua on that.
Perfect.
So do you need a copy of this or no?
I don't know. I'm just going to read the resolution.
And stick with the same number of 88, I believe.
Okay. And for the record, Jeff Lindsay, EMS chief. This is the note and resolution for TAN and the total amount of $2 million. I am requesting that the Board of Commissioners for the Bonner County Ambulance District, DBA Bonner County Ambulance, approve the attached $2 million note and resolution authorizing this $2 million tax anticipation note from Umpqua Bank to fund November 19th, 2024 for the purpose of rehabilitating Bonner County EMS. These funds will be deposited into the designated EMS bank account.
Bill Wilson just signed up.
Hey, Bill. I have a question for you before we sign.
Okay.
So on the letterhead, it does use the DBA that we were discussing in email. On the signature line on one of the pages, it references Bonner County EMS, but on the last page, it does say Bonner County Ambulance Service District. Do you have an issue with the signature under the line that just says Bonner County EMS? This is, I think, just the latter portion.
Yeah, so I did discuss this with Ms. Bonnie, who is our bond counsel, and we both agreed that using the DBA terminology is fine. It's really just as long as the bank is satisfied with it, and so they know who, the party that's going to be obligated. It's clear from the rest of the document that those two terms are to be used synonymously. So I have no problem with that.
Okay. So did you want to make a motion? Okay, I move that Bonner County Board of Commissioners sign the November 15th.
Do you need this?
Yeah, because it's, the names are changed. So. Do you want me to say it?
That's you.
It says Mr. Sheen.
Oh, does it?
Based on the information before, I say move to approve the $2 million tax anticipation note and resolution as recommended. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions from the public on just the loan? Just the loan. Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Seeing none, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And then she just emailed, she wants it back.
Okay.
I don't know where that next piece goes.
Do you know where this goes, Mike?
And so part of this EMS kind of budget weekly report, it was, some people questioned it, did it, we're going to change it to say the district, but it was for me to be able to say what I'm working on because I'm digging through what's going on in EMS. And in this case, I've also asked Chief Lindsay to kind of give an update on what he's been working on. One of the, some of what you already saw was a request that we put in some internal controls related to budget. Some of what we're finding as we dig back is this goes back quite far in terms of how did we set up EMS? It is a district, but then there is no memorandum of agreement, and it looks like what we can really say we did was said we need emergency services in Bonner County, but we didn't really stick to how you build Bonner County EMS. but we didn't really stick to how you build Bonner County EMS. And when I say we, I mean really, the Board of Commissioners has a role in that, and what does that look like? And we have to, we're working with legal to review the statutes that govern how this came to be and what we need to do to fix it, because there needs to be a clear line of Bonner County Ambulance District. I do have a dissenting opinion from Chief Armstrong on the board, because partly what we need is more hands on deck to research this problem and how we fix it, and in part, to make sure we have a representative from the fire industry to be on that, to help work with that as a recommendation from me. Because the fire side, we all have the same goal, this health and safety of Bonner County, but we need to not duplicate services, but ensure that we're expanding our services with our growth from both sides. But one of the issues is the foundational development of Bonner County Ambulance District needs to be addressed, and it's not, it's as clear as mud as to everything. We have accounts we opened without resolutions, we have a decision, but we don't really have that concrete plan. And so that's in part what I'm working on, is kind of figuring out how we came to get where we are and what we need to do to fix it. And part of that is going to be the framework of what is the ambulance district look like? And in part, part of what Chief Armstrong's presentation highlights is, it's not just Bonner County elected that needed to decide the direction. There is, and you kind of learn what people don't know about emergency services. For example, it's not just that you dial 911 and someone came, it's what level of care came to you. And so, is Bonner County wanting a medic? Is Bonner County wanting a paramedic if you're having that emergency call? There is a difference. So if you have your slip and fall, and you just need to be lifted up, that's one thing. If you have a, you are in distress and you need pain pills, you need one person to come, but that might not be who's on your bus, depending on what the community supports. Because one of the things we have to look at is, what is our levy? Are we going to grow, and how do we communicate to the community that as our population increases, the emergency need and emergency services is increasing? I will tell you, on the side of fire, I am in legislative district too, but I am a spirit-like fire person. Our levy failed, we still have issues with fire personnel. And the idea of saying volunteers are coming our direction, it's not accurate. We, it's a paid system that requires paid employees, and it has to be competitive, which is part of what we're bumping up against on both organizations is even with, it's actually all emergency services, from the sheriff to EMS to fire. It is a skilled position that relies on people that are willing to put their life on the line to provide their services, that need to have continuing education and growth, but need to want to work in an area where we know we're not going to pay what is competitive in a nearby area. So in part, what we have to attract is, we have to have the personality that says, "You want to work with me a little bit extra." So with that, I'm gonna let Chief Lindsay give kind of a where they are now and what we're working on. And we're going to continue it, as probably change the verbiage on this, but it's to hold us accountable for telling the community what's going on, because in part, some stuff was stated in the community that didn't have enough information before it was stated. So with that, Chief Lindsay?
Sure, and one of the things I would like to say, thanks to Mike and his staff, Clarissa, and everybody else that's been involved in this, these emails that have gone out, and then the commissioners as well for, because the big piece of this was getting the TAN in place so we could continue business. Now that that's in place, we can breathe a sigh of relief that we have funding through, to at least get us through till January, when we get our tax, and that's towards the end of January, when we get our tax in. So one of the things I've sent out to EMS yesterday was an email, and basically, the email just stated, let's, you know, everybody's, right now, everybody's, you know, high anxiety and everything. And so one of the things I wanted to let them know is that no decision has been made as far as staffing patterns, that sort of thing, no, no decisions have been made for, you know, all the things associated with that. So with that said, I mean, I would love to, as, and Mike had a spreadsheet yesterday that I was looking at, I would love to be able to, you know, look down the road and say, "Hey, we're able to, you know, hang on to what we've got, continue the same staffing model we have." I don't know that that's possible, but I would like to sit down and make those decisions before we just willy-nilly go, "Well, we're changing over to a 48, 144," or whatever schedule. So I think there's definitely a lot more work that needs to go into seeing where we're at, forecasting long range, where we're gonna be at, before any of those decisions are made. So again, we're still kind of a week, a little over a week into this kind of emergent response here. And now that we've got the TAN, which was huge, we can continue doing business. And like I say, for now, there's no, no decision's been made as far as the staffing patterns, staffing levels, et cetera. We do have a plan in place in case we are told that we do need to cut down on significant amounts of overtime. If we do, we do have a plan in place, and that is to split the shifts up to the 48, 144. But again, I don't want to do that. I would rather not have to do that. I would rather continue on at the staffing level we have and kind of, and see if we can figure out a way. And again, I, long range here, but you know, if we have to do, if we pay off our TAN and have to do another one at the end of next year, or at the end of that physical year, to get us over until we can start building, again, our reserves are not gonna get built back up overnight. But if we have to do that, I would, I would personally, and this is me, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone else, me personally, I would rather do that and keep what we have now and keep our employees whole than to make a rash decision on, you know, having to go to a different shift schedule and, you know, potentially hurt their long range or annual income. So again, those are decisions that will be made in the coming weeks, but nothing's been made official now. We're still, we're still in the, in the planning process and digging through all that, all the information, so.
So I've, just a quick comment, I've received everyone's email, so if you have the same issue, know that I'm looking at it. People have said, "Please check the math on the proposed plan." I think there's been a lot of people who have asked that question, I'm looking at that. I actually have received a request from a lot of people to say, to asking the question, is Bonner County leadership going to take the opportunity to speak with the staff of Bonner County EMS, not just hearing a report out? And that is going to take place as well. And so if that was something you had an interest in knowing, is that is going to happen. We want to make sure we're doing the right thing for Bonner County, which is inclusive of Bonner County EMS staff. A lot of, that would be a huge hit, but there also needs to be change that affects the bottom cash line of Bonner County EMS. You cannot, we cannot, and I'm gonna say this as my cautionary tale, is we cannot accept a tax anticipation loan and treat it as if we don't have to address the problem in the budget. That is a Band-Aid to the leaky boat. It has to have some adjustments to the way this budget is, because otherwise, we are losing money and interest on a loan. We are not able to, our tax revenue is very close to what the personnel cost is. It's about $4.3 million in personnel fees, with about five-ish that we bring in about. That's not that big of a window. And so we've crushed through the cash reserves of this account, and we have to have a fix that's not inclusive of a long-term continued loan plan. There may be a need to say, year-over-year, look at a TAN, but we have to, again, go back to the, what's the goal of Bonner County Ambulance District, and actually start doing that five-year plan, which has to include, how are we going to bank money in the cash account so that there is fiscal responsibility, but also that the staff of Bonner County EMS know that they have a job, that it's not a, "I need to take the next job that comes out," because there's not a clear plan of correction in place, which is hopefully, one of the things that that internal control will help is identify a way to say, "We need to address personnel," because if our personnel leave, then what do we have? We still don't have Bonner County EMS, we still can't service the community. So thank you for taking the time. And at this juncture, if Chief Lindsay has nothing to say, or does Commissioner Coroner Bradshaw have anything to say about Chief Armstrong or Chief Lindsay? So I gotta make sure, because I just say it right.
I just want to say that I look forward to resolving this and working together, going forward, and building it better. It can be done, we just need to be able to do it and keep the lines of communications open.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're gonna work through it. I agree with, with the other chief there. I've always been in favor of a one-county fire department, but getting 11-plus fire districts to all get on the same page with 11 different fire commissions and 11 different chiefs will be a challenge at best.
Okay. Bill, I see that we have put litigation at the bottom. If you want to log off, I can just give you a call, let's say if we planned like noon.
Okay.
Bill? Okay.
I don't have anything else.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment here. And Wayne Martin, who's hiding behind his wife Susan Martin's name, I'll say that's who it is. Go ahead.
Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County resident. The staff meeting you mentioned, is that going to also include the public to be able to attend and input, or just staff?
What staff meeting? I have EMS on the, on the agenda every Tuesday.
Well, but you were talking about talking to the staff members and their input on EMS, I thought.
No, that would be, no, that, that wouldn't be an open meeting, that would be in a human resources meeting with staff.
Okay, next question that I have is, and I'll...
And that's not, so I want to clarify something. That's not to say someone is saying something negative about EMS at all. It's how do you extract good information? And sometimes it's, you need that cone of protection so that people feel free, freely to discuss. And I want to extract the absolute most information so we know the direction. There isn't a complaint that's coming forward that says, "Asia, go and talk to someone and say it's anonymous" when it's only one person. That's not what it is. It's part of doing a failure mode effect analysis of not just what leadership says, but also what are the people that do the job, because that's part of a review. So it isn't, there hasn't been something that has happened that has added that in. I was just asked to make that comment publicly of, will we be asking staff?
Not a problem. I just lost, I just lost 40 seconds.
I haven't been watching the timer like ever.
Also, with working with the fire districts on medical calls, because the chief mentioned lifts. I listened to the audit and everything with, with the fire district, or the EMS, sorry. And there are calls, I had to have my mother-in-law lifted because of a fall, where the fire department could have sent, you know, their rescue truck with two gentlemen to be able to lift her up instead of having to have EMS come out to do the lift. Is that something that would be able to be considered? And in that case, it would require dispatch to obtain more information to be able to say, "Okay, instead of sending out an EMT on the ambulance, all we need is, you know, two people to be able to raise her and the closest fire station, at least being able to say, 'Yes, we can respond,' or 'No, we can't,'" and then sending, if that, if you follow what I'm looking at.
I did follow you, but I dare not interrupt your next 40 seconds. Is that it, Wayne?
Pretty much that. I, I do have an interest in the fire service and with the studying and all that I've been doing recently. If there's input, I would love to be involved in that. Thank you.
Sounds good, with 20 seconds is fair. So one of the things that Chief Lindsay did mention is that they do address that concern with respect to calls, even to the point where it, that sometimes, all of them are responders. And so you'll have occasion where maybe Chief Lindsay will go and do a lift assist instead of sending out a whole ambulance bus for that reason and do that assessment, and then kind of feel doing a call that way. I think what you're mentioning is something that does already happen, because they have to identify what level of service to send out to the call. Any other comment from the public on those two topics?
I've got a comment about what Armstrong presented.
He was faster than you, sorry.
He's always faster.
I got a little history, so it'll be a little history and then part of the question. So my name's Ethan Colby, I work for the Selkirk Fire District. I started with Segal Fire District in 2008, just after the Bonner County EMS formation in 2005, when we ran an ambulance. Some of the history, Bonner County EMS had an ambulance at Segal Fire for multiple years, from 2005, a little bit before when Big Sky collapsed, till 2012, when it was taken from us due to very tumultuous political beliefs from the county commission at the time and the chief at the time. My question is...
Thank you for saying "at the time," because...
Yeah, it's been, it's been a big history, and I understand the commission board cycles through like everyone does. It took me some time to mature and realize that, so that's something that we all can grow with, right? But inheriting our problems, when you look at the ambulance district ordinance, and Segal's dealt with this through multiple chiefs, and it's no fault of Chief Lindsay, he inherited the problems of their past as well. It references partners, and the fire districts have never felt like partners, because the various agencies, the various commissioners, the various chiefs have all stuck their fingers in it to kingdom build. And so what are we gonna do to build that partnership? Because I love working with the crews on the ground, I work with them every day on my 4896, and all I see is just unnecessary stuff versus creating a service that is financially sound and working together. Because if you look at the ordinance, it says partner agencies, that's the big thing. And I think that's gonna be something you're gonna have a lot of people hung up on, because we don't feel like partners sometimes, and that's my personal opinion from the past, right? And so I want to know that whatever we do, it's gonna be working together and not driving that wedge farther and farther and farther to split us apart, right? Because my family counts on us, I've had to call EMS a lot, I've had to call EMS for myself when I was in anaplectic shock. So I want to know that when I call, there's an ambulance or a fire truck or both coming. I don't want to find out that, you know, somebody's delayed an hour, that would be very bad. So, thank you, guys.
Bowman.
Hey, Bowman, Bonner County. I'm in a little bit of a unique position here as a, as a Northside volunteer firefighter and a Northside commissioner, but more importantly, I think, a Bonner County taxpayer and resident, and that's what I'm speaking as today. So whatever I say is not being spoken on behalf of, I'm not representing Northside or Selkirk. I want to go back and re, so, and thank you for Chief Lindsay and Chief Armstrong for speaking today. I was a little surprised to hear that we've gone back from the 48, 144, back to the 4896, which is a good thing, and two people have brought up the camaraderie that happens, you know, that you have red, green, blue shifts, and they serve together. The fire departments are serving with EMS, and it's pretty awesome to have those crews working together, training together all the time, it's, it's important, so I'm glad to see that. But now I have to ask if we're, and last week, we established, and we had to kind of drag it out, but that the 48, 144 is going to result in a decrease in personnel on duty at any given time countywide, which translates really to a reduction in service. And that was not being spoken, it's out there. I'm glad that we're not going there right away, but then how are we addressing the budget? If that's, I mean, that was brought out to be the budget fix, the main component of it. And if we're not doing that, what are we doing other than Band-Aiding with a $2 million loan? One of the things that also came up last week was, we were told that EMS management has gone and talked to EMS staff, and that they were, would be on board with this reduction in overtime and reduction in pay. Because I have this relationship through the fire department, EMS personnel have reached out to me and asked me to speak at this meeting, because they know I often do, and say that they in fact are not on board with it. There may be some that are, but there are a lot of them who are not, and they're reluctant to come out publicly and speak for fear of repercussions. So that needs to be stated. I would urge, or they are asking, that, you brought out that you might have staff meetings with them, that's awesome. It was suggested that you go to Survey Monkey and put out, make it available to every EMS staff member to be able to express their thoughts and ideas anonymously, and so that can come to you as the board. And let's reiterate that this, you three commissioners, one, two, three, run EMS. And it, and the chief answers to you, and you answer to the voters, and that's how the fire districts work. And if everybody's doing their job with the fire districts, it works really well. We look at that budget very, very closely, we're in close, we work very closely with the admin people. The staff have input to the admin, and they're often at the commissioners', you know, everybody gets a voice. And if we see a... And if we see a light coming, we want to make sure it's not a train headed our way. If there is, we do something about it. We operate on very, very thin, I wouldn't even call it a margins. We just barely get by. I mean, we just bought our newest engine. It was 21 years old for $100,000. That's what we're doing to live within our budgets.
Is someone going to donate three minutes to Bowman?
I will.
All right, thank you. I'm getting near the end. Let me just look through my list here. I would like to revisit, and I won't read it again, but I did ask the question earlier, how did, how did this not get dealt with earlier and who's going to own that? A lot of people should be owning that. And in Chief Lindsey's defense, well, chief should be looking at the budget on a regular basis. He clearly didn't understand how to do that. Notice wasn't given to him initially, but when it comes to the board, it's the board's job to then go to the chief and say, hey, we got a problem. So nobody was doing that. And then I'm going to suggest going forward, since the, this board of commissioners is in charge of EMS until or unless something changes, I'm going to request that you have dedicated meetings. So you have your board meeting here, but having a meeting once a month or twice, whatever it takes to get through this, that are strictly, this board of commissioners, just like we do with the fire district, a regular business meeting of the EMS district that comprises this board and the public attends in a workshop form. That's all I have. Thank you.
So I can only address what I have been doing, okay? So I'm speaking as just Asia. And so with respect to the comment about what, what happened when the cash issue came up, there was action taken. And I, in the original meeting, I read out an email that after the treasurer sent out a response that said there was a cash balance low, there was a solution put in place. The clerk sent me an email with the response that said, once we receive the tribal consistency fund into the EMS budget, there was an additional $66,000 that was given to address step in grade. At no time was the level of the current issue that we're talking about brought forward until after that, which is the action that you're seeing now. It isn't uncommon in the cash line for there to be a problem with the cash line. It is not the same with EMS by scale, but if you look at like waterways, it is a consistent thing that you get a report that says their cash is not good. And in part, you have seen some corrections of that. For example, part of the HSA fix will address drawing out, and I want to say it's about $60,000 something dollars that drains their budget at the beginning of the new fiscal year, but also before they receive the tax money. And so that then pulls down that available reserve that should exist for that recommended $2 million availability for the first six months. So that fix alone addresses that. And so I can tell you, I've been digging through this. I didn't go to the conference on purpose so that I could stay behind and work on this. Once it came to me, I took action as a commissioner to understand the problem. The problem is, is that it didn't happen overnight. It didn't happen last year or the year before. It's been happening year over year over year. And so part of one of the things that was identified is how do we communicate it at the level that requires us to look at it at a deeper level than just, oh, we got through the next tranche? Is that really what we're waiting for? How do we send the email that says it isn't just that we're waiting for the January drop of money? We have exhausted a recommendation of a $2 million reserve? Well, part of that is, we didn't go through accounts in Bonner County and say, these departments should have this dollar amount always in their cash reserve. And if they come within 15% of that dollar amount, we need to trigger an alert system that requires something. We have not done those things. We did that specifically for EMS today because it triggered the problem. But I'm only one commissioner. We have one clerk, one comptroller, and an EMS chief working on that problem. But this isn't, that's what I can say I'm working on. And it isn't, it isn't going to be a quick answer of how to fix it all in one week. But I will say, what has been uncovered and worked on has been a significant amount of work for the data that you're digging through because you're not just digging through the last few years. You have to look at what happened from the beginning that we created EMS. And part of the problem is, how did you do the budget? What accounts did we put in and what lines did we put in? And how did we pull money out? What did we use the money for? I still am, I have a legal opinion pending that I mentioned last week of, we created a capital investment account that significantly drained that fund of $2 million for that building. But when I read the statute, I have some questions on, was it created correctly? I can't find a resolution. Did we put money in it correctly? There's a clear definition of what that money is. And EMS didn't buy that building. Could we even say that they, we could have taken money out of that? And part of that is, what did we make? Did we make just another budget? Did we make a district? Did we make an agreement for EMS? None of those things are clear and you're going back to 2003 and it's 2024. So that's what I can say I'm working on. And as I find things that are reasonable to request changes to, I'm bringing it forward at the Tuesday meeting, which is why I requested a standing EMS line so that I can report what's happening in the public and the public can ask questions about it. It isn't necessarily for Chief Lindsey to stand up and say something. It's for me to show the community that in part, I am responding to the problem by being transparent of what's being worked on and telling you what I as a commissioner am doing to address the issue and what I can put in place with my background. That's what's happening here. There is a significant amount of collaboration between Chief Lindsey, between Chief Brinkmeyer, myself and the clerk's office on this of how do we move forward? With respect to your comment about what is the right, the kind of the shift? What, what should we do as the appropriate shift to reduce the overtime? The overtime does bleed this budget. There's a lot to unpack with that issue. I have had a lot of conversations with Chief Lindsey over how do we make people feel like they're, they're moving to Bonner County EMS was even worth it if we significantly changed their rate of pay? Should we have addressed their baseline salaries instead of auto-building in an overtime rate that we're not in control of? That's something that I can say I'm looking at, but I can't tell you the answer because this has been compounding year after year. And in order to do a good job of getting that recommendation, I need to do work. It's only been one week and that, that's not to say that everybody doesn't want the answer, but objectively, I don't want to have a reduction of force if we can avoid it. I don't want to have a reduction of service. But I also have to pay attention to the plan that takes away the salary that essentially attracted Bonner County staff for emergency services. If you rip that away, what does that look like? I have to look at the process of having a joint relationship with fire. We have to consider that. That was one of the things I identified in the internal control is outsourcing. What are our options? How do we reduce it? It is not enough to take the tan. We have to reduce the budget. The tan is not reducing the budget. It is essentially just front-loading us to move forward. That's what the tan is. So I don't want people to think that that is a fix. It is not a fix. It is to continue operations. We still have a lot of work to do to figure out what the right fix is. And part of this is, it's supposed to be a difficult conversation and you guys are all supposed to ask the difficult questions of the board of commissioners. But I also have to say what I don't have all of the answers, but tell you what I'm working on. And to give opportunity for people that reach out to me to say, I want to give a comment on what's happening in Bonner County Emergency Services because we invested our money in taxes in this program. And in part, I think consensus-wise, we need to build a better foundation. The foundation has cracks and crumbles in it, but we still have people dialing 911 for services. So what do you do? It takes a lot of hands on deck to internally audit something and develop controls and fixes. And I'm putting in a lot of time trying to do that as fast as I can. But I welcome everybody that does send suggestions and ideas of where to look, who tell me there was a resolution back in this year that I still can't find. I appreciate that. It's, it's not for me not doing something about it. I'll also clarify, a chair doesn't have more responsibility than the other board members. The only thing a chair does is run this meeting and sign paper, which is exposure to carpal tunnel at the rate of paper we sign. There is no greater obligation for the chair to work on a project than there is a different commissioner. I am advocating that the community continue to say what they know from the years of when this happened because I was not involved in the build of this as a commissioner. And neither was Chief Lindsey either. And we have to figure out how to move it in the right direction for the county, understanding the mission of fire and EMS is all the same. Safe and healthy well-being of Bonner County residents, which means we have to have the service. That's the one thing we all agreed on. We needed Bonner County Emergency Service District. Question is, now what? Sir, you have to come forward now.
Jordan D. Hall, I work for EMS. I live in Spokane and I commute up here for work. Mainly, my question is for Chief Armstrong. He started out the presentation saying he wanted to reduce redundancy and not take over EMS. But what he mainly proposes, sounds pretty redundant. Either he wants to take over EMS and take ALS, which is the Higher Level of Care Transport or Patient Care, or he doesn't want redundancy and doesn't want EMS. So there's no overlap, in my opinion. They already have EMTs and I've worked with all these guys. They're amazing people, well-trained, same with our staff. I love both staffs, but I don't feel like there isn't some type of overlap in redundancy if they have ALS because we already have ALS. So you're, they're taking it from us to transfer it there, so there is no redundancy. Or you have ALS on both sides, which then costs the taxpayers more money because we have a taxing budget and they have a taxing budget, which is redundant for taxpayers and for, for us as a county. So I guess that my clarification is, if he doesn't want to take over EMS and he doesn't want to have redundancy, how does he plan on doing this overall? And if he wants paramedics, how does he plan on hiring the paramedics? Because staffing, if he wanted to send his staff through paramedic school, it takes about two years. And then to hold an ALS transport license, or sorry, an ALS license in general, he'd have to find the medical director to do that and to get the narcotic license for the DEA to do that as well. So it, it doesn't sound like there's a way to do it that's non-redundant, unless you're taking ALS from one side and bringing it to the other. That's the only way I see it being non-redundant. So that is my question for Chief Armstrong and how he would plan to do that if his plan is implemented.
Okay. One of the things I'll say that I think happens in this structure is there needs to be open dialogue between EMS and fire within Bonner County with the same goal of what are we doing and exactly what you said is, what's our goal? Because there's a difference of what level of care and the availability in the different areas, especially outlining areas. I don't live in this area. I'm southwest Bonner County, so we rely on anybody that will show up. And so the level of care question in our area is, obviously, we want the highest level of care because the transport times can be significant. And so what does that look like? So I, what, instead of asking Armstrong to answer, I'm actually going to ask that we have a conversation with fire and EMS in a dialogue form that says, what is our direction of Bonner County Emergency Service? Because both of these organizations are needed. Both of them have the opportunity to provide service to Bonner County. But we have to do it in a way that has us all on the same team, which I think that we are. We just have to know what does that team look like? And we can't do that if we're segregating, I am not on that team. Because I, one thing I've heard very clearly from Bonner County EMS is, the majority of people have told me they do not want to become firefighters in order to be the overtime issue. FLSA. It was like, I was going to say FS, it was like too much, too many acronyms. That has been the output. So if that's what Bonner County EMTs and paramedics are saying, then that has to be put into the algorithm of what does it look like if that's not an available option? Because you cannot make staff to do one or the other. But we don't know that if we don't sit in that room and have that conversation of what does that makeup look like? And with a goal from fire chiefs and EMTs of what is best for Bonner County, not what do I want, what I want to build? Because I think if anything over the last almost two years for me, I didn't get to build what I wanted to build. I had to do it based on what did the county want and need. And that's part of all of our job as public servants is, what's best for the county is not necessarily what we want as individuals, but that doesn't make it any less best for the county. And I think the first thing both sides will agree on is the conversation is best for the county. I'm making everybody nod. So I saw Chief Lindsey nod, Armstrong a lot. So we'll say, everyone agrees that the conversation's necessary. And that is where we have to start with this discussion because we can't say we built a good EMS if we don't have the conversation. Sir, yes.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
My name's Vern Roof. I'm a Bonner County resident. And I also have the unique privilege of being a Northside Fire District Commissioner and also a Selkirk Fire JPA Commissioner. I'm not representing either organization today and the thoughts that I'll be sharing today are my own personal opinion. What I'll do is I'll do the best I can not to repeat anything that either Chief Armstrong said or some of the other public comments. I'll try to keep it as short as I can. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their willingness and commitment to examining closely the recent issue regarding the events involving the Bonner County EMS budget. It's vitally important to not only identify how and why this series of errors occurred, but to prevent a similar occurrence in the future. As a taxpayer and an elected official, I also appreciate the willingness to explore other options going forward. Should it be determined that Bonner County EMS, even with recent changes, would require some type of additional modification or realignment? These possible solutions might include an enhanced model, including an even closer working relationship with the fire and ambulance districts, yet to be determined, hybrid system, or the integration of Bonner County EMS into the fire service and perhaps some type of modified service model. The current system is not broken. Every private business, government entity or organization needs some type of upgrade at some point in time or adjustment to keep up with current trends, expectations, service levels and budgetary constraints. I'd like to also add that the citizens of Bonner County are very fortunate to have a level of EMS service that presently exists. Multiple levels of committed and very dedicated individuals from the system medical director to the dispatcher that answers the initial call providing pre-arrival instructions, to the EMTs and first responders of the fire ambulance districts and law enforcement agencies who make the initial contact with victims of medical emergencies or traumatic injury. Excellent EMT basic and advanced skills allow for a viable patient to be transferred to a paramedic for a more advanced level of care which continues to the arrival of a patient to the emergency room. Add to this the availability of life flight for the transfer of extremely critical patients to a trauma center and you have a winning combination for increased survival and recovery rate for a patient. As stated earlier, though I am involved in a fire district and a JPA providing administrative guidance and oversight, I believe it's of utmost importance to carefully evaluate the present issues, options, recommendations and possible solutions. Public safety has been and will always be the most important responsibility of government and will in no doubt be the case in this circumstance. And I want to appreciate, or actually, I want to thank the commission for allowing Chief Armstrong and the other speakers to make their presentations on this very important topic. And thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, sir. All right, I know this is very long, but the reason I did his presentation at this meeting was it was an opportunity in front of the public. And I'm trying not to do multiple meetings throughout the week so that people can just waste one day on Bonner County business. Wayne, you, that better be Susan because you already spoke on this topic. Or you didn't put your hand down. All right, any other public comments on the EMS fire presentation? Seeing that, we will, I'm going to fast-track through this unless HR wants to take it slow and say we've got some open positions there online. Fair Board is open. There's two positions that are open on the Fair Board. I personally am looking for training for staff on budgets. I've identified a few, but haven't made a final selection on that. I'm trying to do it so that it'll be electronic so that more people can participate with that. With that, do you want anything to jump in there? Is that good enough? Okay. On District Two discussions, I'm just going to say, I will give a thorough report next week. If you didn't participate with last night's fair workshop, you'll get an earful Tuesday. It was very long and detailed, but I don't want to be short on what I say on that. But I'd rather talk about that next week. With that, District Three.
Oh, District Three.
Oh, well, now we can keep going, everybody.
Is there a fire?
Well, and that was part, we were accommodating the time because they wanted to participate. And so that's, doesn't work at night. District Three.
So meetings that I were at last week, I did attend the IAC convention and the training. I was appointed about seven weeks ago and have received no training up until that point. So I did think that it was important for me to attend. Was a great opportunity for me to network with other counties. It was a great opportunity for me to network with other counties within the state of Idaho, talk with other county commissioners and realize that a lot of us counties actually are dealing with a lot of the same problems. And it's really a great opportunity to be able to bounce ideas off of each other, look at what other people have done when they are faced with the same situations that we are at times and see what they did to help resolve it so that we're not reinventing the wheel. So that was a great opportunity. Commissioner-elect Domke was there also, I think. I'm not going to speak for him, but I think we learned a lot and there was a lot of great opportunities presented. And also the Friday before, I attended the IAC Legislative District One luncheon and the speaker at that was Fire Chief Commissioner, or Fire, Fire Chief Commissioner, Fire Chief Carpenter.
Just Fire Chief Carpenter.
Commissioner on my mind. And she was discussing the issues that the local fire districts are having with the state. And I think if you don't, aren't aware that we lose a lot of our money to the state. It goes to the state and we get little trickles, pennies on dollars back to the counties and the fire districts in order to do our job and our hands are tied. And basically was discussing state legislative issues that could be changed to better the opportunities of the local fire districts. That's what I have.
I forgot to mention, I, we have to put the Ag Protection Ordinance and workshop on. I let that fall by the wayside this last week because I was working on the EMS thing. I'm asking a different commissioner to pick that up and bring that forward to the community because my time is being spent on the EMS issue. Most of it's already done, already got the ordinance done. I've had, sent it over to planning to take a look at it. It was a joint effort through the top five northern counties, but that's a workshop that needs to happen because a decision needs to be made. I made the decision to let that one drop because the legislature forgot to tell us the consequence if we didn't do it. So since there was no consequence written into it, if I was going to be the one that needed to do it and couldn't get it done, there's no consequence. So, all right. Does anybody have the desire to just give a public comment even though we've been talking the whole time?
I have a question. Do minor land division developers have to pay spousal to support the additional homes that are created under the 10, 12 and 2011? Some of the issues.
So the question is whether or not we have fees on minor land divisions for development impact. There are no development impact fees. I would like that to be revisited on the next board, but there are no development
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dmitry Borisov. I was at the last meeting with EMS and I guess with some misunderstanding, if I could speak, and could I ask for maybe extra couple of minutes during my public comment?
Six, are you, are you asking me that? So last week I said I would, I asked you if you wanted to be on the agenda. So do you want me to put you on the agenda for next week?
That's okay. I can speak right now since I'm here.
Okay, that's fine. Are you speaking in the capacity of your position or as an individual? Because that was what I asked you last week.
I'll speak on both because I do both think, I think I speak as a resident who is paying taxes and I will speak as the chief of the volunteer ambulance company as well.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me more time.
Can we reset his time while we worked out the kinks of the minute?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dmitry Borisov and I'm a Bonner County resident and a chief of Clark Fork Valley Ambulance and have been serving in this position for almost a decade. A lot has been said about the EMS situation and undoubtedly much more will be discussed. Thank you for taking the time to address these issues, listening to others and considering their input as you work to resolve this issue. Before I begin, I would, I want to acknowledge that Clark Fork Valley Ambulance has been providing EMS services in the county for over 50 years, long before the idea of Bonner County EMS was ever conceived. I would also like to thank all the volunteers in the county who provide EMS services to their communities at the minimum cost to taxpayers. The three volunteer agencies, Clark Fork Valley Ambulance, Priest Lake Ambulance and Schweizer Fire save county approximately $2 million annually while operating on just $130,000 a year in taxpayers' funds. That said, I must express my concerns. Recently, Chief Jeff Lindsay threatened to pull Clark Fork Valley Ambulance county contract implying that Clark Fork Valley Ambulance would no longer be allowed to provide EMS services to our community. He said, and I quote, "I can work with our commissioners on a plan to move forward." I would like to focus on leadership at BCMS. I believe it is very important to know the history and how we got here today. In addition to the inappropriate use of $2 million used towards new building, throughout the years, concerns were raised about BCMS spending practices and five dom building approach and has been done even before Chief Lindsay took over. A few years ago, after Chief Lindsay became a chief, all BCMS employees received raises. Shortly after, the commissioners were forced to address financial issues caused by excessive overtime, which they were not aware of, and they said it, over 800 hours of overtime per employee per week because it was either not explained to commissioners or deliberately withheld from them. Also, Chief Lindsay claims to be watching the budget like a hawk, yet in the last meeting I had with him, he stated he didn't care about the budget and would do whatever he wants. Additionally, he has engaged in bullying tactics and dishonesty when dealing with Clark Fork Valley Ambulance. In April of this year, I attended MSAC meeting with the sole purpose of arranging a meeting with Chief Lindsay to discuss the decision to place a medic in our area. The goal was to work out details and minimize potential issues or misunderstandings. Despite his public promise in front of MSAC members, we are now in November and no meeting has occurred. Instead, he took action while I was out of the country on vacation, spoke directly to my, to the president of Clark Fork Valley Ambulance without including me as a chief. He also spoke directly to my other board members, made decisions without consulting me and expected us to comply with his directives. This unwillingness to engage with local providers and resolve issues has led to significant problems. Some BCMS medics have bullied local EMTs, I'm talking about Clark Fork Valley Ambulance, and in one instance, BCMS personnel took Clark Fork Valley Ambulance without Clark Fork Valley Ambulance EMTs present to transport a patient. When I brought this to Chief Lindsay's attention, he ignored it. He has also created a culture where EMTs and advanced EMTs are undervalued. My understanding is that the majority of BCMS calls, over 90%, are being run by medics, even though less than 50% of all calls are ALS calls. Reducing county EMTs and advanced EMTs to more than drivers, which incurs a degradation of skills. The original BCMS system was never designed to be run exclusively by medics. Furthermore, medics are self-dispatching to ALS and BLS calls in Clark Fork area, response area. At one point, a medic self dispatched from Sandpoint to respond to a non-ALS call in our area. Medics do what they're told by their leadership. This is examples of waste of taxpayers' funds. In March of 2023, I submitted a Freedom Information Act request for EMS budget. The next day, Chief Lindsay called me to ask why. During that conversation, he mentioned that his budget appeared larger than normal due to a one-time infusion of ARPA funds for a building. However, this infusion should not have affected the cash account. And there are several questions that need answers. There is more, but I just will bring up a few. Why is the county paying Chief Lindsay a full-time salary with benefits, which is over, I assume, $140,000 a year when he only works part-time? Why are Bonner County taxpayers covering the cost of his vehicle maintenance and fuel when he drives to, when he drives it to another county for a different job? Why do we need an assistant chief who is also driving a county vehicle? Why is staff being hired for a station, has been hired for a station that does not exist and did not even had the foundation laid? The county could save over $100,000 if Chief, if Chief's position was fully treated as a full-time position and eliminated unnecessary expenses and eliminate the assistant chief position since there are only 30 employees to supervise. This is just one example of how money could be saved. I would like to ask the commissioners to consider providing greater support for local community, community ambulance services because they were and will be providing service despite the fact that EMS is out of money and perhaps encourage other communities to establish their own ambulance services. The EMS system was designed around local agencies providing EMS service through the county, supplemented by paramedics responding from Sandpoint. It was never intended to be medic-heavy or operated by a single agency with medics responding to every call. Additionally, I urge you to carefully evaluate the GPA proposals and ensure throughout investigation into what went wrong with the goal of preventing similar issues in the future, while also including creating mid and long-term plans. Thank you.
Are you going to send your document by email for record and review?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. To all three commissioners?
Yes, and if you guys need any confirmation of what I have said, I have all emails to as well.
And so I would say if you have objective information about what you're saying in that, then you should send that as well. And I would copy it to also Chief Lindsay. Anybody else in the room? All right. Try and speak because I can't hear you. All right, we're going to go to Teresa Heisner.
Teresa Heisner, Priest River. As I understand it, Mr. Bradshaw is not a resident of Bonner County. Continuing as a county commissioner under pretense he still resides in Bonner County is considered misrepresentation. Therefore, anything Mr. Bradshaw does in the capacity as county commissioner should be considered null and void. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that'd be a great comment if it was accurate, but it's not. So there you have that. I'm still a resident in Bonner County.
Thank you. Diane Welly.
Well, yes, I'd like to comment on Teresa's comment, which I appreciated. After voting to not save money by limiting those credit cards, we then heard the statement, ah, money saved, it's always a good thing. Well, this was a disingenuous words from a commissioner who no longer has skin in the game and is in fact wasting county dollars by not doing any office work and not even bothering to attend meetings because in truth, he's playing a commissioner seat shell game while drawing pay and a pension. Money saved is the cry of Commissioner Bradshaw. He should resign today and allow the incoming commissioner to fill that seat so that the taxpayers can actually save money. Asia, I want to thank you for canceling, you're attending the conference because of a critical situation in the county that needed your full attention. Yeah, rather than glad handing at a conference, you stayed to work the problem. Thank you. I've noticed today, for the first time in many weeks, that no cell phones at the commissioner table came out and I really appreciate that. I believe it was just over a year ago, Asia, that you were challenged on having a cell phone at the meetings and it was asked who's handling you and who's feeding you information? And none of that was true, but still the appearance is not very good and I really appreciated not seeing any cell phones at the desk today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Amy, do you want to try again?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were actually taking Dmitry's thoughts seriously. I know that sometimes when people stand up there with those types of hot topics or allegations, they are dismissed as tinfoil hats, but as we are learning that as people bring thoughts and tidbits forward, they are coming true. So I just want to make sure that you guys are going to investigate what he's bringing forward and let us all know if there is any validity to it.
Is that all?
That's it.
All right. So I requested that Dmitry provide the document he read and any supporting documentation to the full board and Chief Lindsay so that that can be reviewed. Hopefully what people see is we have a new movement on a board that's addressing the issues as they come forward and giving deliberation and responses when issues arise. Doesn't mean we like all of the answers, but I think that that has been a shift. And so hopefully it's, he just presented it, he'll send it over and then you will absolutely be able to have access to what he's talking about. I don't know, he presented it just now. I don't know the answer to the validity of it, but I will absolutely include it in a review.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? All right. We will go, we're going to end the open and go into executive session immediately.